Okay. Oops. I'm going to call the vice meeting to order. Can we have roll call?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Boudar.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wa.
Here.
Mayor Massimo Roy.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is the city manager's report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My report this evening is really about transition, which also covers the next agenda item. But I'm very pleased to be in communication with the council's choice as the next city manager, who has arranged to spend several days together in the next, actually the week after next, to walk through a number of transition issues, everything from flexible work scheduling to ARPA issues, to council, city department heads, performance evaluations, and other things that we've been working on. So I'm very pleased to have those dates set. And so the transition for the interim city manager's last day is the end of this month, which is March 31st by contract. And the new city manager will start two weeks later, on April 17th. Assistant city manager Stephen Clifton, who is on vacation this week, will be back and will be covering things during that short interim period. And that would conclude my report.
Thank you. Next is the review and approval of the employment contract for the new city manager.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor and members of the council. What I'm presenting to you this evening is a proposed contract drafted by our city attorney between the City of Mount Lake Terrace and Jeffrey Knighton. As you recall from previous discussions, we selected him, you, the council selected him from a field of five very competitive finalists. He is currently the city manager of Shelton, Washington, and has been in that position for about four years. The conditions that we discussed in the letter of intent have, of course, carried forward to the contract. And even though the contract is almost eight pages in length, I'll simply summarize the basic contract provisions, which is first and foremost, employment as city manager in accordance with RCW 35A point 13, which actually is, which specifies the role of a city manager and a council manager, form of government in the state of Washington. So it's very clear, although the contract also lists other expectations on the part of the council. So it's clearly defined what his role as the chief executive officer of the organization is in terms of working with the council, reporting to the council, and being responsible for all employees of the city. His start date would be April 17th. As I mentioned, it's an open-ended contract, so even though there are termination provisions on both his part and the city's part, it is not a set-term contract. The starting salary, as discussed previously, is $200,000. There is a relocation allowance of up to $15,000 to cover the cost of temporary housing and moving from where he lives currently, which is about 150 miles away. There is a car allowance, as was the case with the last city manager, of $500 a month. There is a city contribution in deferred compensation of 10%, which is fairly standard practice in city manager contracts around the Puget Sound area. There is a provision of six months of severance if he's terminated without cause, and it clearly spells out what that means, both with cause and without cause. And of course, without cause is the case of the council simply deciding they want a change, which is the basis for severance in the first place. And then there are professional membership association dues, such as Washington City Manager Association, the International City Management Association, and other kinds of things. These are the primary points. And the benefits in the compensation, I believe, are well within the standard range for comparable positions in our area. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have, but I would be, I am recommending that the council approve this employment contract this evening, rather than waiting until next week.
Does anyone have any comments, additions? Do we want to take that vote tonight? All right. So do we have to have a motion? Or do we just?
Yeah, if one of you would make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the city manager employment contract, that would do the trick.
All right. I'll go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Remove to authorize the mayor to approve and sign the employment contract for the new city manager, Jeff Knighton.
Second.
Okay, do we need to have a discussion, or can I go into the? So I'll just call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Permission. Okay, so next on the agenda is the review of the long-term communications strategy.
Madam Mayor, let me do a brief introduction. I know you've all met Ricky Frushante previously. When she was promoted to the new position of communications manager about a month ago, we talked about the priority that council members have placed on communication. And to me, it's very clear, all seven of you at different times have talked about the importance of trying to get it right as often as we can. And even though Ricky's been in a different position in City Hall for quite some time, she recognized this was a new position. And so we were looking forward to an opportunity for her to present the framework of the various channels of communication that she's coordinating now, with the goal being to hear from the seven of you as to what you'd like to see either continue or be done differently for communication for the City of Mount Lake Terrace. So with that, Ricky.
Good evening. It's nice to see all of you again. So first, I just wanted to give you a little bit of an overview of the history and what exactly it is that I do every day here. So what is public information and why do we do it? And the answer is that we want to have an informed and engaged resident. And the more information that we provide in the right ways at the right times can not only help them make good decisions for their lives and their families and their households, but can also help tell the story of who we are as an organization and why, how we use their tax dollars to serve them in the best way we can, for the maximum benefit of the most people, while also making considerations for equity. And even though we're a small organization, there's so much happening here every day. And people might have no, they might not have any idea how much thought and planning went into the person that comes out and fixes the water main, or, you know, planning ahead for postage of when we mail a postcard. And so all of that is part of what I do. And so the difference of when you, when we had the specialist position that's now frozen is that position really was more day-to-day producing social media posts, taking pictures. And as the manager, I'm now more involved in these higher-level policy discussions and working with Andrew and working with Stephen about not just what's going on Facebook every day, but, you know, what is our story? What are we doing? How can we best spend our resources? Because we work in an agent, we work in a field where everything is important, but if everything is important, then nothing is important. And so it's really every day of triage of what are the high points and the high-value targets of what we need to accomplish. So really briefly, I would just like to go over, most of what I produce goes out in a physical or digital format. And I say I, but I have a lot of support from my team, and they also help. And another really important thing is that so often you'll recognize my editorial voice in what we produce, but a very important part of my role is to amplify other voices and create space for other voices. And so that's why you'll see, you know, a photo that was taken from a different creative eye, or a sentence written a little differently. And that's part of what I love to do is sort of curate people's voices and share them. So when you look at alerts, these are something we've been experimenting really more in the last six months. That number is now in the 220s. And that's basically, we can send out a blast that people sign up for via email or mail that says, "Avoid this area for police activity. We're closing this road." Shelter in place. And that, I think, is a really powerful tool. The City Managers Weekly will probably be revisiting with the new city manager to see how they best want to use that tool, but that's a weekly newsletter that goes out that is pretty descriptive from parks and police. News releases are a little more traditional, old-school. I do tend to blast almost everything out we do to print, radio, and television. We do get less attention from the media than we probably did 10 years ago, and so I really treat those more like our opportunity to tell our story. And a lot of people are probably consuming those products directly from us. You're all familiar with the newsletter that goes out six times a year. That reaches every single address, so that's a very powerful tool. It also helps us reach the demographics that aren't online or are less online. Social media is really how we reach the most people every day. The data makes that very clear. And we have about four key platforms that we are really meant to be used in different ways. So you can't just take a piece of information and blast it across all the platforms. Spotlight is a key on our homepage that we use to try to, that's kind of our big hurrah of the day right now. It's information about the upcoming fire annexation. Coffee with the City will figure out what the new city manager wants to do with that. And then as the manager, I also oversee our website. We probably have about a dozen power users who take care of all those different pages. And we know people come to our website. We know what they're searching for. We know what they're clicking on. But we also know that if we want to get information to people quickly, social media will be in the thousands compared to in the hundreds. A fun thing about what I do is almost all of these products produce data. So we can make spreadsheets. We can make charts that tells us what people want. Anything involving public safety is going to get, you know, thousands and thousands more views than almost anything else, because that's what people are interested in. Lastly, I wanted to share that, you know, I'm always thinking about who my stakeholders are, and that is a huge group. And that's internally, that's every department, whether it's, you know, police, utility billing, finance. I'm their conduit to reach the public. And externally, that also means faith groups. It means businesses. It means cultural organizations. It means nonprofits, youth organizations. I'm in touch with those folks every day, and they, they all have things that they would love to see from us. City council are also key stakeholders representing the residents. Boards and commissions also have lots of communication needs. And that's the main points I wanted to bring today, because I really wanted to hear from you as we start thinking long-term about what this program looks like, and what the new city manager coming in, what they want, but to also hear from council.
All right. I know that, I know that we have questions about this. So who wants to go? Okay, go ahead. You can be first.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ricky. Appreciate the presentation. Appreciate the proactive outreach to engage with us and get our thoughts, and just appreciate all of the work that you do. I think it has come up multiple times about, from residents and from folks involved with various volunteer efforts, that they are really appreciative of our continued expansion of how we connect with folks and try to get them information. So I actually had somebody tell me yesterday that they think we might communicate too much. And I was like, "You're the only person who has ever told me that, and that's amazing." Because I will say, I'm sure you know, we usually hear the opposite, right? That people are like, "We didn't know." I do have a couple, I guess, of questions. So I know one of the tools that I think we have, because I think I've signed up for it, and it maybe gotten a couple of messages over the years, but not much is text messaging. And I would love to hear, I guess, thoughts around that as a tool for communication. Is that, I mean, is that, is that, am I remembering accurately that we do have some sort of text, often text message communication tool? And I'm just curious.
I believe that's the alerts, but I think it was one of those things that happened piecemeal over time. And last summer, we looked at it, and we were like, "We are just going to consolidate this into one big group." And so for anybody listening at home, it's cityofmlt.com/notify-me, and you can sign up. We've probably sent five this year. But yes, you can sign in to get those. We try to keep it pretty high level. We don't want to text you every time there's a traffic cone out in the road. But if we think it could disrupt your commute, it could affect your route to school, we try to let you know. And we also are meeting next week with the Department of Emergency Management on a whole different scale to talk about the capability to send, reverse 911 isn't the correct term, but you can basically geofence cellphone users and send them an emergency message. And there's a protocol for doing that. And so we're making sure that we're plugged into that tool for a major incident versus alerts for us work great for, "We're closing a road."
Thank you. No, appreciate a better understanding of that. And I will say, at least for me, that's probably one of the more effective communication tools. So it would be nice if there were opt-in options that maybe weren't just for emergencies, if there was one for events in this community, or one for, I don't know, links to, a link to the City Managers Weekly report, or those sorts of things. I think that would help maybe reach folks who are inundated with email and who maybe aren't using social media as much. So I guess that's one, one thought. A couple of other things, the DEI Commission yesterday mentioned, because I was there and they were having their meeting, and mentioned that from their perspective, they would like to explore various, like, connected to Mount Lake Terrace, but not Mount Lake Terrace-specific kind of social media options. So I wanted to make sure that I put that out there, so they would be interested in a commission-run social media platform, for instance, or some sort of partnership with the city to help amplify the work that they're doing. So I wanted, wanted to share that piece. I guess a couple of other thoughts, as long as we're talking about all the things. The newsletter, I think folks love, and I appreciate that we continue to make that investment in print communication. I know that a lot of communities have moved away from that. And to your point, I think we reach a lot of folks who don't get reached other ways. And so really, really grateful. I know that takes a lot of work to put together, and I think it's a really valuable tool. Have we ever done any sort of, like, for new folks? I think particularly because we know when new people move into the community usually, because we have utility billing. Do we do any sort of, like, wayfinding or help them? Because I think some of the challenge for folks that don't feel like they're getting messaging, isn't that the messaging doesn't exist, it's that they don't know how to plug into it. So I don't know, I don't, I'm curious if we've thought about, like, wayfinding or some sort of connection, particularly with people who are coming into the community new, to help them find the resources that already exist.
And with utility billing, we talk about it a lot. Jennifer Jewett actually has a product that she produces that goes out to every new customer. And we had a big discussion this year about, you know, we've done this traditionally as this multi-page PDF. Why are we mailing people a foldable, or emailing a foldable PDF? And she's been redesigning it as a one-sheet. So we are talking about that with utility billing. We've talked in the past about having a welcomed Mount Lake Terrace brochure. Someone's approached me about having a brochure that's aimed at bringing in businesses, of why locate. And so all of those things just take time and resources. But I'm interested in all of those things, especially too, I mean, once you print the brochure, you have to decide what to do with it.
Maybe we could stick it in their first billing or something, like, since, I don't know, maybe that's a way to help reach them.
I think, I think that's a great idea and worthy of more discussion, because we, you know, the challenge of what we do every day is you can send people seven pages, and that might be more or less effective than two paragraphs. And every day, we talk about finding that balance. But I like that idea, especially because we know that utility billing is how we can reach people. But we also have to be sensitive to the fact that, you know, not every household welcomes receiving their utility bill.
That's true. All right. Well, thank you for all of the work, Ricky. Really do appreciate it.
Some of those utility billings are paperless, so they don't get an envelope. We'll have to figure out how to get it to them a different way. So anyone else? Okay. Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. I like having the website as the one to go to, because as far as text goes, I'm starting to get too many texts, scams. I mean, my doctor's calling now, "Make sure you show up to have your tooth pulled." That's a joke, by the way. But I do have the dentist calling to confirm all the appointments, all the medical are on there now. I have people fishing. I'm almost getting over-inundated with it. So I do like having the website, because I know that if you have a smartphone, you're able to go to the website and get anything you really want. We just have to look at it and see, is it, can you navigate to that and find the things you need? So that's just my personal opinion. As far as the DEI having a personal, private, social media thing, I don't know. We should have more discussion on that. I still like having the website. So if you want to see the Arts Commission, you go to the Arts Commission. Want to know about the parks? Hours at the pool? Go to the parks. Want to know about garbage? Everybody wants to know about garbage. You click that, and now the website's taking you directly to our waste management, Mount Lake Terrace site. Before, it used to take you to, I don't know, New York or something. Then you, then you had to click Mount Lake Terrace or something. But that's working really well. So I like having that one-stop shopping. That's really nice. Then it doesn't put you in a position of having to do every social media site. And I, I don't know the first thing about that. I could handle websites, but all that personal media stuff, I stay out of that, probably because I'm a politician. And so thanks.
And I don't know if you've looked at our homepage over the last six months. We've done a lot of really careful thinking about the homepage within the tools that we have right now. And we actually, I added a carousel based on what people were searching for the most, so that way hopefully they're finding on their homepage. We know from traffic patterns that they're not going to search a lot. A lot of times, they just go right to that search bar. But, and then also just trying to make sure that the webpages are sustainable, because if you have too many sub-pages, the information, like, anytime I find a page that has the old City Hall address, I'm like, "No." But, so if you ever find pages that need updating, be sure to let us, let us know. The only challenge though is that we have to get people to the webpage to consume the information. And so I think about that a lot. And we are experimenting more with QR codes, so that's another tool to think about. So thank you, council member.
All right. Ray Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Ricky. I think some of what's been on my mind has already been discussed a bit, but I'm, I'm curious to know, and this is probably for, you know, an ongoing conversation about, you know, the resourcing that you might need in terms of IT. Stephen, I know we've, you know, relatively recently, in the past several years, updated the city website. But I think it would be helpful for us to know, you know, what, what other resources, you know, that you as a professional might, might need in this, or, you know, for the future city manager, incoming city manager, to understand. It's, it's really encouraging that you are so data-driven in your practices, and you're clearly sort of being very agile in how you communicate. But, you know, so I don't want to get too far into the weeds in terms of data, but I am curious about, you know, how folks who say, might be an apartment dweller, or, you know, folks who aren't, you know, social media power users, or who, you know, don't have occasion to come to the city page, are getting information, or if they're getting information at all, and I realize this is sort of a hard egg to crack. But I'm curious about how, you know, in, in this sort of strategy, we're getting at, you know, folks who might not be well-engaged currently, also would like to know about, you know, folks who don't speak English as a first language, or aren't, you know, or might need more, like, culturally competent sort of outreach in whatever fashion. And, you know, so planning around those elements would be helpful to understand. I realize, you know, you're, you're one person working at this, but I think it's, there's a real opportunity to engage community in a way that's robust, more robust in the sense that, I know that there's, there's folks who, you know, whether it's, it's sort of the traditional media materials and communication materials that we put out, or say how, you know, you see the Public Works director sitting behind you, like, how, when, you know, there's, there's a need for, you know, water main leak, or, you know, some other sort of thing, how are we communicating with, with folks in community in a way that, that is, you know, helpful to them and is, you know, reducing the friction of, you know, interactions between city staff and, and community and residents? Those are kind of vague ideas, but I think, you know, my main point is, is about how, as a, you know, in this planning process, how we're, you know, finding a way to communicate thoroughly with, with folks that may not be receiving, or might not receive, you know, city information in the way that, that say, you know, I might enjoy, you know, I find all the tools that you've outlined here, and the, you know, opportunities to engage really easy and, and, you know, approachable, but want to make sure that we're thinking about all residents as we're, you know.
So I can share.
Building a communication plan. Thank you.
Sorry, sir. So I can share, answer a couple of those points. In terms of technology, I'm pretty set. I mean, tools are so powerful these days, and the budget invested in the camera, invested in the lenses, that parts, that parts, and the IT has been really helpful with getting me high-quality edit, or video and photo editing software, which, which is crucial for wanting our products to look professional. I'll tell you that in the communication, government communications world, we're talking about translations a lot. The fact is, is that translations do cost money, yet they're important. We have data that shows the most spoken languages at schools in city limits that we look at. When we did the City Hall moving postcard last year, we made a choice to do the top three languages. And we do have staff and volunteers that are willing to help. I have to be sensitive to asking folks from other communities to do that labor for me, even when they volunteer. I have to be mindful of that dynamic. But it is something that I think we have a lot more opportunity to do, and that could be a future conversation about. I know the Health District has standing contracts for translations, because those things often take time. But I will say also, as part of my conversations with emergency management, that they have pre-translated messages about major hazards that they have provided to me, because you can't, you can't just get it translated. You have to share it with someone and make sure it's culturally competent. And there's a lot of ways you can really make big and sensitive mistakes that way. So I think as the new city manager gets settled in, that would be a great topic of how do we better translate these materials? I'm sure you're all aware, we do the postcards. There is an extra cost, but when something is high-level, like when we did the utility VOA support, we did a postcard on that. We also do mailers. I know that Public Works often will print and do door hangers and plastic bags if it's something that's really going to affect someone's house. And all of those things take time and energy, but we can do them. And then we've also been using the City Hall kiosk for if stormwater has a public event coming up, the fly fishing event. We can, as long as we have room for all the things we legally have to post, we know that we see people engage with those materials. But I'm always interested in more approaches. And then at the other end of the spectrum is the people that are more technical, and we know that when we do, let's say, short-form video, like Instagram reels, that, the one about spring, the spring cleanup last year, got like 11,000 views the last time I looked. And all of, you know, it just really is a matter of each day, what are you allotting your time to? And we could make more use of YouTube. All of those things are possible. And then I'll add on to that, that we just have to keep in mind that we went from a communication staff of 1.5 to 1, while the tools are ever-expanding.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Thank you. I'll start off with a question, and then I have a whole bunch of comments that you
I'll start off with a question, and then I have a whole bunch of comments that you asked. You said your team. So what, who's all on your team? When you just say 1.5 to 1, you kind of are dependent on everybody? Or do you have an actual, when you say team?
So I consider myself part of two key teams. One is the executive leadership team, which is mainly the directors and managers, and we all get together, and that's where we talk about the high-level stuff. But I'm also part of the city manager's office, and that includes a group of really talented people that bring different perspectives, and we all have this great dynamic where we support each other. And, you know, I say, "Lan, can you help me make this sentence better?" And she does. And, "Which of these pictures is better?" And so we all have different technical skills, and it's really just a pleasure to have that dynamic.
So there's time allotted to these other people to help with it?
I think it's more when you're a small and dynamic team, that you just chip in as you're able to help each other, especially just because, you know, we all have different skill sets. So sometimes I have to put my former reporter brain on, and sometimes I have to put my amateur graphic design brain on. But I'm, of course, respectful of their workloads and their chain of command, but I'm just lucky in that we can collaborate. Because I'm a creative, and so I don't, I don't want to listen to my own writing voice all day. So that's what I meant by team.
And I was trying to get at what our resources were, too. So you answered it great. So since you ask, I'm just going to throw out some stuff. So going off what Rick just said, sometimes you just get overda, you know, with the cell phone and everything now, everybody thinks communication is a universal tool to solve everything, and it's really not. And sometimes you can turn people off, and then sometimes you need to have somebody see it at least three times before they get it. So when you send me an email, it, yeah, yeah, it means nothing, because they all start blurring into each other. And, you know, I get 100 at work every day, you know, and then, and so you kind of see them kind of one-dimensional, and they get flat. So to me, communication is, you know, I like paper, so I consider it a 3D communication tool. You know, there's a lot of different things that goes into communication. And one thing I believe is our council needs to have a workshop on our communication styles, so then we can go back to you and tell you what, how to best communicate with us. So that's a different communication piece, and how we can communicate with you. And another thing is maybe having a study, because I know the way I like to receive information is so much different from a millennial or somebody else. And so it's nice to be able to touch upon the different types of communication styles that each generation maybe prefers more than another. I took a class many years ago on a computer screen, and they said, "People my age, we go around the outside edges, and we don't look at more of the left, upper, right." And it was very fascinating to me how we see things different, even on a computer screen and/or a website. And so I'll leave that one up to you, of course. And then the way to get people to our page, and this is one thing I've wanted for years and years and years, is to focus on residents, and that's former residents and current residents. So Mark O'Connor, who is a wonderful violinist, who went to Mount Lake Terrace High School, is here right now for a concert and just wrote a book. It would have been really nice to maybe give him the key to the city or something, and focus on him. Or a gentleman who went to Mount Lake Terrace High School, just retired from Queens White Rock Band, and he's a fascinating guy, and there's people that have been playing professional footballs, and judges, and all sorts of different things. And you said, "Tell a story." And to me, the people are the story and the history here, so I think that would help get people to our webpage, because I know people love seeing either themselves or somebody they know on the website, which leads me to the historical photos. It'd be nice to have a historical site on our website of all those photos scanned in, so people can see, you know, their parents who have passed, their grandparents, you know, all sorts of things. That would bring people to our site. And then just going on, things that grab attention is also like taxes, telling a story, hey, you know, here's why you, you know, pay so much in taxes. Did you know, and I know we have some of those, you know, most are voted in. And then we used to have welcome packets to the city, and we'd come up here and get them, and they were sheets, and so they've kind of changed over the years. But also, looking at different things in communication, I was just with somebody the other day, and he said, "Give me your phone." I'm like, "What?" And he downloaded his business card right onto my phone, and I just thought, "Well, that's pretty cool." You know, and so there's communication like that. So I didn't have to write anything, I didn't have to pull out my phone, he didn't have to call me. And signage around town is a big, important piece of communication to me, because I know when I see Turd Terrace signs, I see it every day driving home, and there's different things in the city of Lynnwood, and you go to different cities, they have signage on pointing which way is which. But I'm not talking about stuff like that. I'm maybe thinking more creative, more creativity on signage around town. And then the one thing, and this is where I'll stop, is my biggest pet pee is Facebook, because I think Facebook sometimes does the most damage to the city. I know Virginia used to write people back, because one of the biggest complaints was the water bill, water bill, water bill, and it's over and over. And it's really hard, because you want to educate people, and some people just want to be mad about their water bill, and I can't blame them. And it's really looking at what people are saying on Facebook, and once it starts going, it can really go fast, and there's a lot of damage that can happen if it's not reeled back in. And I just don't want somebody's full-time job being a Facebook police on telling people, this is where you go, or that's where you go, and maybe figure out a strategy of how we can, you know, maybe put something out there on water bills once a month, or this once a month, to kind of combat that. But you asked, so I thought I'd do a data dump, so thanks for listening.
And I will just note, on the private group, we do monitor it, but for public records reasons, the city can't engage as the official government on a private page. But we do monitor it, and we do have conversations, being proactive about, hey, here's what we're talking about, how can we get ahead of this? And making sure that the city manager and directors are aware of conversations that are happening.
Okay. Anyone else? Go ahead.
We're all jumping in here, so I'll jump in. First, let's be clear, you're doing a great job. Make sure that's loud and clear. That said, you wanted feedback. So the first one I had, and thank you, Councilmember Donovan Payne, for bringing this up. I don't, I'm on our website right now, and I don't see any ability to translate.
There is. Bottom right corner.
Okay. Select languages in the bottom right. I was wondering if that was us or not. Perfect. So that answers that first question of, did we at least do that? And going to Councilmember Sonmore's point, I looked at this entire page, and until you said "bottom right," I didn't see that there. So that's my way of saying, in the spirit of placement, I might figure out a different location on here, or at least acknowledge that. Literally, this whole time, I've been waiting just to say, hey, where's that?
No, we've talked about that, because when we made those 911 brochures, which I think you've all been briefed on, we purposely moved that button to the top.
Okay.
So I think that's worth having discussion. I want to say that I've seen other cities that have that as a bar. I can't promise that to you here, but I definitely hear what you're saying.
Yeah. So what I was going to recommend, one, is happy we have it, because I thought it was part of Google, that's why I was like, how is it not here? If you look at the VOA page, they have it actually in the top-left corner, funny enough, where you can see at least 12 languages to choose from. So I don't know how they did that, but that might be worth looking at. Moving forward, I have noticed Mount Lake Terrace showing up in the Everett Herald more often. Yay, Everett Herald. We are here. That said, I'm curious whether or not you already do this, or have a plan to develop relationships with the local news media folks, like an actual reporter, not just send it to this box or email address? If you're able to cultivate those types of relationships, just in the spirit of, we have a lot going on, I think that's why people are starting to pay attention to us a little bit more. But if you need leads there, I'd be happy to pass some leads on to the various locations. And outside of that, I think the other ones have already been addressed, although I will double back and just make sure, with our new DEI commissioner, or excuse me, liaison, that something that they had shared with me when I was their liaison, and I don't know how far it went, was creating a checklist for how to send out a press release, if you will. And where I'm going with that is, I do not recall which mailer it was, but we didn't actually have any other languages on there, and there was a lot of dead space where that could have been. Not discounting your point about finding somebody to do it, managing their workload, no, it goes along with that, but just kind of recognizing that from the DEI's perspective, they thought, how is it whoever's sending these out almost has to re-envision a press release each time versus there's a checklist of just go down the list of, here's what we've all agreed should be in a press release? Can it be managed in this particular press release? Maybe not, but at least we know we checked the box. So I don't remember how far that conversation got, but that's my way of saying, I know you have a relationship with the DEI, so I would encourage you to double back to them, because at the time, it made sense. But, you know, a lot of things were moving, and your position wasn't as it was. I don't think we had the bandwidth anyway to do it at the time, but it might be worth revisiting.
Got it.
And outside of that, I'll double back to the point. I think you're doing a great job. And I do have one thing to tease about, which is you pick, I wore one shirt one time, and that's the photo we used. I told you about that. I was like, are you kidding me? I never wear plaid, and that's the shirt that's always showing up. That's a personal ha-ha on me. Nonetheless, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
All right. Is that everything? Did you want to go a second time? Okay. And then I'll go on to you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, I didn't even, I didn't even look.
I'll wait.
Didn't even look.
Done?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I heard from Councilmember Woodard was, did he mention that on our website, there's an area for Translate?
Yes.
Is that the, is that the Google Translate?
It is, and it's basically, not to get too technical on you, but it's done through, so like HTML is your most basic web code, the next layer of that, which was more, someone correct me here, is sort of more like the bones and muscle of the website. And so this is actually generated through that code by the website. So with help from someone else, I was able to move it on one webpage, but it's a little bit more intense in that it's actually code instead of moving the modules around.
Well, that's good to hear. I've been using Google Translate for four years. I teach in the Michael Teel School District. We have to translate 57 different languages, and I found it very accurate. We haven't had any problems. So that's the way to go. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor first him.
Mayor, yeah, and thank you, Ricky, and thank you. Appreciate the opportunity for us to have this conversation. And remind me, one of our goals is to develop a full-scope communication plan that identifies key target audiences, and utilizes multiple channels to inform and engage the community and stakeholders. I know part of, part of the key step was creating this position. Remind me, did we budget, did we fund in the budget development of communication plan also?
I would have to double-check. I believe it was in an early draft.
I thought, I remember that it was, and so my hope is that it is, and if it's not, then let us know, because that is going to be important. I think we do want to go ahead and create, just like we're creating strategic plans for, you know, DEIC and arts, and, you know, always with parks and recreation, et cetera, I think it's important to have a strategic plan, develop a strategic plan for communication as well. You're doing a great job, and I'm excited to see where this goes. And I do want to get back to, I mean, multiple channels is key. Everybody has their preferences. You know, website is a great tool to be able to provide all the information, and the detailed information for those people that actually want more information, or are able to find something easily. Another note, by the way, and I was just looking at, it is obviously important to make sure that that tool is mobile-friendly. I remember getting an email about somebody complaining about something not being mobile-friendly, and maybe that was just one instance, but generally, our website is usable both on, you know, on a laptop, computer, tablet, iPhone, or in whatever other smartphones that people use for God knows what reason. But the, but the, having a usable website is absolutely the key. That said, I think the print mail, print is significantly important, and that newsletter. I mean, I remember when I was, you know, door-belling, the one tool that I heard the most was the newsletter, that they got the newsletter, read the newsletter. Our citizens are very engaged in the community because of that newsletter, understand what's going on in the community because of that newsletter. I think that is the most important tool, and I think postcards are important, follow-up on key things that we want to send messages out on. But that said, I mean, you know, some people hate social media, but that is an important tool, and that's a way a lot of people get their information. What's the, what's the term on wrong information? But it's important that we have, take advantage of that tool and use that vehicle to get our message out. And YouTube, you know, and then we think about, okay, what, what are things that people gravitate towards? For instance, on social media or whatever, well, pictures and videos. And so it is important for us to be able to be tapping, making sure we have pictures, but also even the videos, and utilizing YouTube. And it's important to keep on top of what are new social media outlets maybe coming along. I'm not sure that TikTok is the right one for us, but, for instance, but there are always new vehicles, and it's going to be important for us to keep on top of that. And getting back to a point that Councilmember Ryan pointed out, is, or maybe, somebody in the conversation talked about, you know, doing social media effectively can take up all of your time, and you don't have all of your time to give just to social media. But there are reasonably priced services that can help us with our social media messaging and getting things out. So if that's something that you need, or would be helpful, if, to be able to allow you to have more time, let us know, and kind of let's maybe look at some of the costs to be able to use that more effectively. As far as, and then translation services, I agree, that's real important. And actually, I want to talk a little bit about that during the ARPA funding, and identifying target audiences, the groups, and then being able to target, you know, when we know that there is a significant portion of our population speaking Spanish, or Tagalog, or Vietnamese, or whatever, if, you know, if we have large numbers, then maybe we can help target our postcard mailings, or other vehicles, or reaching out to the community groups, and helping them deliver our message to those specific target audiences and whatnot. Then as far as messaging, I, as you point out, there's so many different things, and we have to triage and focus and whatever. Our city goals should be one of our key messages that we're constantly talking about over and over again, making sure that that's what creates the city that we want by, you know, the vision that we have, and where we want to go. The more we talk about it, the more we believe in and get engaged in it, and see ourselves in that community by talking about those goals and what we're achieving, what we're doing as a community. So city goals, celebrating arts, culture, and diversity is another great opportunity. And then just to remind everybody, why I was so excited about the creation of this position in the very beginning was utilizing part of our time in talking about economic development and doing the outreach, and working together with whoever is kind of leading that effort and doing the outreach, but being, but messaging and communication is a key part, and outreach is a key part, in being able to attract the kind of economic development we want in our community. And so I think there's an important role there, and also just, you know, things like business spotlights, and things to brag about the businesses that we do have here in Mount Lake Terrace, and talk about some of those, some of the great services and commodities and whatnot that are offered here, and help direct, direct customers to our businesses here in Mount Lake Terrace. So I think in a nutshell, that's it, but do, I'm really excited about the direction we're going, the communication we're going to have, and the plan we can put together to be most effective. Looking forward to working with you on that. Thank you.
Any more questions? Any more questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make it quick. Just one thing that, that Mayor Protam Wall mentioned that I guess I want to, we've talked about a little bit in the past, and maybe isn't quite traditional communication channels, but I will just, I guess reinforce what he was talking about, about kind of identifying folks within the community that can help to get our message out. And we've talked about like community ambassadors, and really thinking, how do we identify people who are tied into various communities within our community? And how do we make sure that they have a dedicated line of communication that they can then help us amplify? And so I guess I would just love to continue, and I think that's a big body of work. I'm not sure if that falls in your scope, and I guess I just want to make sure that we are continuing to have that conversation, because I do think relationships are a really powerful way that we can get our messages to folks that aren't necessarily getting them from some of these other ways. And I would say as part of that, I would hope that we would all be community ambassadors as well as, as members of the council, and I think our commissioners as well oftentimes want to amplify the things that we're doing. So just thinking through how to use us and make sure that we have the tools to be getting out the word around the things that are going on, I think would be really, really helpful.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for the feedback and consideration.
Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ricky.
Okay, so next on our agenda is what everyone's been waiting for out there, the discussion and recommendations of the ARPA funds.
Madam Mayor, and Members of the Council, we're going to bring up the whole team to start the discussion. As Councils certainly aware, the ARPA funds are federal dollars that came in during the course of the pandemic and, and are going to go away if we don't use them. Council's also aware that there's roughly $4.6 million left. And so what I'm hoping to do this evening is introduce Janelle Lewis, our Finance Director, first to kind of go over a view of the, the dollars and, and where they are and what we spent thus far, and then to have some key members of our executive leadership team share their recommendations. What you have here in terms of our, the overview of a presentation is a number of, shall I call them priorities, as department directors see them. The, the task was to come up with one-time, non-recurring kinds of costs to fund capital projects or acquisitions that the city needed. And so I asked the department directors to work together collaboratively to do that. And so we ended up with a list of recommendations which totaled about $1.3 million more than the available funds. So this is not intended to be a balance and budget presentation at all, nor is this intended to suggest to the council that the other things that you've, a number of you have spoken about that are not on the list are not to be considered. What we are here this evening is to respectfully share as a starting point these capital projects, and then at that point, turn the discussion over to the council as to what questions you may have for the staff, and then most importantly, where would the council like to go with ARPA, the funding available, that is. It is not my expectation that we're going to bring this to a conclusion this evening. I'm hopeful that we may conclude on some things that there's clear consensus to do, but there is still some time in the weeks and a couple of months ahead. And I know the, the new city manager would want to be involved with that as well. So if you look at page three of the memo, you can see a list of projects, and, and I'm going to first ask Janelle to do a brief overview, and then we're going to turn it over to the, the directors to, and again, briefly, we're not going to turn this into a whole budget workshop. We're going to do brief, concise comments. Janelle?
I'm Janelle Lewis. Do I have to start?
Yep.
Okay. Can you hear me? Okay. I'm Janelle Lewis, the Finance Director. Good evening, everyone. So on the screen, you'll see the ARPA expenditures proposals. So the beginning of this is what Andrew was speaking about, is this is the amount of money that we received for the ARPA program. It was about $5 million. We gave $500,000 to the Volunteers of America. $89,000 was for the childcare stabilization and workforce grant city matching funds. That went into the 2022 budget, ending budget. And then, as you go down, there's the 2023. This was from the General Fund Ordinance 2018, 2018. That was for the 2023 budget. You'll probably recognize all of the things that we were spent in. Over here on the corner, the side, you'll see the running total. I just put that there just to see what the balance is as you are spending the funds. So this leaves us with a balance of $4.5, $4.6 million to spend on programs, services, what have you. And then you scroll down, and then I actually should have totaled this, but the IT, information technology is $336,400 for 2023 and 2024. Again, the ARPA funds need to be obligated by 2024 and spent by 2026. And we're on a biennium, so '23 and '24. And then you'll have the Parks and Rec and Facilities. We have $2.45 million. And then Public Works is $2.875 million, for a total of $5.9 million, which brings you in the negative of $1.3 million. Again, this is just everything that we wanted to propose, and we wanted to bring to you so that you could all view it. And then each staff member, each department director here is going to explain their section of the PowerPoint that I will bring up, and hopefully this works. Nope. How do I do that? Sorry, technical difficulties. I had to make it into a slide. No notes. I don't want any notes. There you go. So our ARPA discussion. Recreation and Parks, so that would be Director Jeff Betts.
Well, good evening, Councilmembers. So first, on the list, this is Recreation and Parks, and there's three different items on here. You'll see there are some recommendations for Bounder Park improvements, and this is to continue our journey on trying to improve that park. And essentially, this would be to connect the east-west trail. And it really it's, when we have the trail that goes north-south currently, that leads from the boat launch to the senior center, and then we will have the new Army Corps project that comes in and installs a new bridge, as well as a new boardwalk on the south. We will have trails that we have money for to construct after that on the west side. We have nothing to connect the east side of that bridge and boardwalk currently to the other trail on the east side. So there's a gap right now, so that'd be the next step to actually have a connection point from there, per the master plan that identifies that. Additionally, on here to add a picnic shelter down near the boat launch, that's on the master plan as well, for a total of $500,000 between those two items. And then the next item is Terrace Creek Park, and this is in the name of the number-one requested item in our park system, which is restrooms. So trying to target an area that is highly used, and if anybody's been down to what they call Candy Cane Park, right, the developed area of Terrace Creek Park, you'll see a number of, of people out there, and not having a restroom on-site is a detriment to the park itself. There is a portable restroom, but not quite desirable. So that, that would include some initial planning, some, some site master planning to figure out where restroom even should go, and that also could help set the stage for future improvements, because we know that playground's 23-years-old, and some initial design work could help us kind of set us on the right path for that. It'd also help us figure out where to put the restroom and site utilities and other site work in general. So that would be that $600,000. And then an arts plan update. The last time we did an update of the arts master plan was in 2009, so it was about 14 years ago, and quite a lot has changed since then, although some of the recommendations may still hold true. So we'd propose that we would hire a consultant to take a look at the needs of the arts community and how we should be fulfilling those. And so that would be a consultant to assist the Arts Advisory Commission and staff to update that plan. And then the next slide is for property management. So on top of that list are emergency generators. Now, the police station and fire station 19 share a generator that's currently undersized. It only powers about half of those facilities, so when the power goes out, they have to kind of pick and choose what's utilized so it's fully powered. Would be, the idea is to actually purchase a new generator that could supply power to both buildings. If, if the RFA was approved in the future, then fire would potentially pay for half that generator in the proposal. And so that approximately $500,000 total would be, half of that share would be $250,000. And then a city hall generator is estimated to be about $300,000. And then the second item on here is for the library roof and HVAC units. So the roof was constructed same time the building was its original, 1988. There's two different roof types on that roof itself. There's a peaked roof that has concrete tiles, as well as a flat torch-down roof. And so that process would probably also require underlayment replacement, some other repairs possibly, such as gutters, those kinds of things. Anytime you replace a roof, you need to consider those. The rooftop units on that building are both original as well, 1988. There's a small rooftop unit and a large one. We have done some work and replaced a heat exchanger in the large rooftop unit about 12 years ago, but after we replaced that, we looked into additional repair work, and there are no replacement parts left for that model. So similar to the police station's rooftop unit right now, where there's no replacement parts that needs to be replaced. So we'd request about $750,000 to do all of that work.
Next is Public Works.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor. Mayor Protam, Councilmembers, interim Public Works Director Phil Williams. I'm actually joined tonight by Jesse Hoffman, who's here in Chambers, our Operations Manager. Rich Meredith is attending. You can see his name on the screen. They obviously have a keen interest in several of these items as well, and if there's any questions you have for me about any of this, they can help me with those. I'll just start with, this is all on one page. The first item is pavement preservation program. And let me get a couple of definitions out there. What the city probably really needs ultimately is a pavement management program, and I see that having sort of two parts. One involves actual paving, where every, maybe on an arterial street, 15 to 20 years, you would go out and take off the top two to three inches of asphalt, replace it with a new wearing course, new striping, all of that. Very expensive stuff to pave, to pave streets, and we haven't done much of that at all in the last nine years. But once you've made an investment like that, a significant investment, and none of this money would go to that, but once you have paved a street, you need to take care of it, and you need to preserve that pavement to give it the maximum lifespan you possibly can. There's a lot of steps to that, repairing potholes, sealing cracks, and eventually doing some other techniques that apply to the whole street, things like chip seals or slurry seals, to keep the top of the pavement protected and not allow cracks to develop that will allow water into the paving section, which then eventually freezes, freeze-thaw, freeze-thaw, breaks the pavement up. And I know you all drive frequently, and you drive around Mount Lake Terrace. Several of you have already mentioned to me that you've noticed the condition of our pavement going down over time, and that's what has happened. We haven't had any pavement preservation done since 2014. There was a nice period of time, I look back in the records from about 10 years, 2004 to 2014, where you had a regular annual pavement preservation program. It was primarily chip seals at the time, and I'm sure that did a lot to preserve the quality of streets that are still in reasonable condition. That's what pavement preservation for. If the street is already broken up or has gone past that, near that curve, preservation is no longer going to help you out. It needs to be repaved. So we're not asking here for any paving money, but two items. One would be four years at $500,000 a year of pavement preservation work, chip seals, slurry seals, and there are several others I won't go into, that might be the right choice for a particular street, depending on its condition and so forth. That'd be $2 million. And then the second bullet under that item is to buy a truck with a hot box on it. Currently, when we go to repair potholes, and I'm telling you, we've got a lot of them this time of year, is when they all show up. This is pothole season. Jesse could tell you all about that. We have to drive to the asphalt batch plant with a truck. They put hot mix asphalt, probably 350 degrees Fahrenheit in the back of the truck. You race back to town and start filling potholes, all by hand, most of it, sometimes with a hand roller. And usually what happens is you have to buy too much, because you got to keep it hot, so the top starts to cool quickly. So you're digging out from underneath that to get the hot asphalt, to get it down, and eventually, it all gets too cold. You can't use it anymore, end up throwing a bunch of it away. With a hot box, you buy that hot asphalt, and there's a flame source on the truck, and it keeps that heated up. It can last for up to three days, and you can work off that same load of asphalt for three days straight. It's much more cost-effective to do it that way, energy-efficient, and so forth. And that would be the other $215,000 under that item. The next one I'd mention is a project that you've had on your project list for quite some time now, and we have a grant for it. It's about a $392,000 Safe Routes to School grant. It's to redo the intersection at 216th and 48th, and you'd be working on all four corners to do bulbouts, put in new crosswalks, and retro, rectangular rapid flashing beacons to protect those crossings. It's a safety project, is what it is. We have a grant for it, but there's a section of sidewalk that goes north and south off of the northwest corner of that intersection, and it doesn't connect. There's just a curb and then a pretty steep little blackberry hill there, if you remember it. What we do is kind of cut that back, put a short retaining wall in, and then connect that sidewalk. And mostly, this request for $460,000 would be to do that, that additional work. Doesn't make a lot of sense to make a really pedestrian-friendly intersection only to have no sidewalk to connect to going north. So that's what that one is. It's completing an existing project where we have a grant, and we have to get that money spent fairly soon on the grant, or we would lose it. Then the last thing on here is, we had several emergency response improvements we thought would be meaningful. The one we've agreed to put on here tonight is just replacing the city's radio system. We've got a series of old, really old handhelds and a base station and some other equipment that honestly aren't even really functional at the moment. Motorola no longer supports them, haven't for quite as, quite some time. Radios are terribly expensive. I'm sure that number jumps out as being, it's hard to imagine that handheld radios and one base station would add up to that much, but they do. There's a picture of one in the lower right corner there. And the county recently put in, I'm sure you guys remember that, when they threw SIRS and it's- and it's, it's the new SIRS, the county 911. They put in the new $50 million radio system throughout the county, which unless we go this direction, we can't even access it. We've been helping pay for that, but at the moment, we can't access that radio system. It would be great if we could replace the radios. And so that's the third item on the list. And that's really important for interoperability between our city, other cities, and also our public safety organizations in a real event. Very important. Cell phones are great, but they're also one of the first things that will go down in many types of emergencies. And so this is the backup. That's all I have.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam and Council. For the record, Pete Caw, the police chief. My list is very short. As you're probably aware, we presently have in-car video systems. They track what the front of the car sees and it tracks what's in, what is occurring in the backseat and the rear of the car. My request for body cameras, we could go one or two directions. We can either add the body cameras to the existing system, thereby having the coverage we have now with the vehicles and the officer's point of view if he or she is obviously out of the vehicle. Presently, we're only videoing and recording the things that occur in the proximity of the vehicle, which is a good percentage of our business, but not all of our business. So what I'm asking for is approximately $250,000, which would outfit all our officers, 30 of them, with body cams. The systems aid in maintaining transparency and policing. I think we can probably all agree in watching the news over the past five years, how important that has become. Additionally, assisting, it would be invaluable in gathering direct evidence for successful prosecution of crimes. The majority of the law enforcement agencies in the greater Puget Sound system already utilize a similar system. And if you're looking at proposed legislation at the federal level, the additional body cam systems are a major component within the George Floyd Justice and Policing Act. I think this is probably very timely. It's very money, very well spent. And I think it's just a matter of time until we are probably legislatively mandated to do this. And what often happens with legislative mandates, they're great ideas, but they're not funded. So we have to come up with money. Not to degrade the importance of the system, but I think we have a very good opportunity here to fund something that's probably vitally important both for transparency, fairness, and aid in the business we do every day. I have a very short list, but that's probably something I consider to be very important at this point that we consider.
Good evening. Gary Knight, IT Manager. So these items cover security, data protection, infrastructure, hardware, software, and professional services. The first one is next generation firewall for cutting edge security and enhancements. Next one is next generation security solutions to strengthen cybersecurity such as zero trust, threat detection and response, and cloud security. Next one is cloud and redundant backup solutions. This will be critical as we move more apps into the cloud. Laptops to support remote work options. Installing fiber cable for redundant connectivity to Public Works and the Recreation Pavilion. This will provide a secondary fiber path from City Hall to both of these locations. And EOC equipment replacement. And professional services to increase efficiencies in workflow processes and network performance. And the last one is time and attendance software. And that's it.
Okay. Are we all?
That is the end of the slide, so questions?
We have questions. So we, Councilmember Ryan and then Sonmore.
Thank you. On the information technology, the EOC, could you help me with that acronym?
Emergency Operations Center.
I was guessing so.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Sonmore?
So I'll just make some comments, then I'll start with parks. I was just, I was thinking maybe the senior center might be on this list too. But our art plan, that was one of the best plans that I'd seen come through the city in a long time, is the one that we had. And I know that's something that we really want in the restrooms, I understand. There's, and not that, I can't believe I'm saying this, not that the park isn't important, but there's a couple pet peas on here, I think, that we really have to do. And it would be police cameras and I'll start here and then I'll go to the roads. Is the technology, I don't think we can afford not to do the technology. I don't know if WCIA would still insure us if we're not taking proper precautions to protect ourselves. And people that get into our systems don't mess around and they play nasty and they play mean and we can't afford it. And I think that's something that we have to have. I'm not sure what time and attendance software is. I'm thinking that's training perhaps? Time and attendance software?
Time sheets.
Time sheets?
Time sheets and payroll.
Oh, oh, just extra cost? Is that?
Yeah, right now, our payroll system is kind of old school. So we are doing everything manually. Everybody is submitting a, well, it's not all manuals. They submit a PDF of their timesheet that they have signed. And then the payroll tag has to go in and manually key in everything. There's a wonderful software program that we could possibly get that will allow all of our employees to be able to just submit their timesheets. It'll be routed to the people that need to approve those timesheets and then be entered into the system. And then, you know, it'll just make things a lot smoother and easier, less room for error, all those things.
Thank you. I would never have guessed. I was thinking it was just a technology piece on, like the equipment piece, so thank you. The next, I don't think we can afford not to do body cameras. I think that we should have already done that. There's lots of reasons on that. One is when you're in that situation and somebody dies, whether, and I'm not going to go into details, but and you have to litigate that case, I think it's very imperative that you have body cameras. And we know that from cases that have already happened. I think that's something that would benefit a lot of people at large. And I also want to get to Public Works. Yes, we did have a great program for paving the streets and we stayed on that and stayed on it and it just kind of just dropped off. And I'm sorry about that. And you're seeing the condition of the roads for it. And we get beat up all the time about 56th. And we know with the snow and the icier and the plowing, it has done a lot of damage to those roads. The Safe Route to School is a fabulous program. We've used that quite a bit. We've used it on 223rd, I think 214th, and it's worked very well for us. Can we build that without that missing piece? Is that even an option? And how much does that cost? Because I know Kyoko knows that spot really well. And I've had people actually come to my house to talk to me about that area. And I know it took a while for us to get this grant and I don't want to lose this grant. How much would the city's portion would be? Would it be the 29?
460.
Oh.
Yeah.
And it's not combined with the 200 below. I was hoping you kind of combined them with the total cost there, the bullet out, but...
No, that's what's missing in the budget for that project. The water utility is also providing some funding to it as well as the stormwater utility because they're going to be having to relocate some catch basins and put in a new section of water line. That would be done before any of the surface work. So the utilities are participating. We have a $400,000 grant. And then the rest of it needs to come from the city.
And that, this is just, it's horrible looking at and trying to pick different things. And I really appreciate you bringing them to us. Pavement benefits everybody. Emergency response, you know, you always have to prepare in advance. And if you're not prepared, one of our first line of emergency response, it will be through our Public Works and what besides police, but in preparing what can be fixed. And so, and then the last thing I just wanted to mention was the library roof that's been going on for years and years and years. And $750,000 is just, I don't know how long you can keep on patching that thing, but it's one of those things that I don't know where we're ever going to come up with money for that. So those are just a couple pet peas that I just wanted to bring up very quickly that I think we, if we don't do something with ARPA funds, we have to find money for these projects. And we have to look at benefiting the entire community and what really works with that.
Anyone else? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to each of you for taking time to help us kind of get some ideas around how we could potentially move forward with these funds. Incredibly helpful from my perspective. I did have a couple of questions. Going back to Jeff, to the, I guess, the emergency generator piece, can you, so that 550, is that for two generators, one for City Hall, one for the police station and fire station? If the RFA annexation is approved, that 550 is the total cost for that with that assumption? I guess I want to make sure I'm understanding what that 550 covers.
Yeah, that would cover our portion of the cost for the City Hall and also the police and fire pieces. So 550 totals. We would have to pay for the City Hall by ourselves, but the total cost of the generator for police and fire is about 500. So half of that would be the 250, so that, the 250 to the 3.
Great, thank you. And then Phil had a question about the pavement preservation program. If we were to go with that program over four years, what percentage of our pavement would we cover in the city? Do we know?
That's a little hard. We do have money in the 23 budget that you've already approved to do a pavement condition study. So we will go out on every street in Mont Lake Terrace this year, collect the current condition of the street. And I could give you a better answer at that time. I can tell you that from 2004 to 2014, we were spending about 300 to 400,000 dollars a year. And with the ravages of inflation in the last nine years, which is why we picked 500 here, I think that's, could easily be applied to the streets. You have to have streets that are in the right spot in their life cycle to even use these pavement preservation techniques. So it's really trying to keep the streets that are still in decent condition to get to the end of their useful life. It's no substitute for a paving program, but that just doesn't fit into this amount of money, so.
So question, you mentioned 56th. Does that, would this address some of the issues with 56th or is 56?
Well, on 56th, much of the problem would be resolved with, in Main Street Phase Two, up a certain distance north. But beyond that, where there's a fair amount of ratty pavement, yeah, that would not be pavement preservation. Those will have to be, a lot of that stuff, I think, could be dig and replace. You could do some spot repairs up and down 56th. It really does need to be a new overlay.
There'd be a lot of spot repairs.
Yeah, there'd be some pretty good patches up there.
Okay. And then I guess I just want to make sure that I'm clear. I appreciate that Councilmember Sonmore asked the question about the transportation safety and accessibility improvements. Those funds are not required to move forward with the Safe Route to School that we've already talked about and approved on our side, correct? That would help with access, that would build a new sidewalk there. And that is not required for that project to move forward and get those grants.
What I'd like to do is give you a written answer on that maybe tomorrow because the 460 is the missing amount of money. Some of that's with the wall, as I mentioned, which is a little bit of new scope, but that isn't all of it. So I'll have to parse that number out for you.
Okay, that would be helpful because, yeah, I thought we had, we had already addressed those funds. I guess I'd be curious to understand what's new scope and what is pain for what we've already agreed to do.
Yes.
That'd be helpful, thank you.
Can I add to that a little? So the existing fund, project was funding the improvements on the corners, but it omitted a sidewalk connection from the northwest corner to the sidewalk further north. And so with this additional $480,000 or $1,000, we'll be able to have a complete sidewalk connection from the intersection to the north on the west side.
Would that include the wall? I thought you said.
Yes. There's a retaining wall that will be needed to hold up part of the bank, but we're going to narrow up the sidewalk to about eight feet so that we can minimize the height of the wall.
Because normally with sidewalks, you know, there's a section that is not going to go in, but this one, I just looked at that wall because it's, you would need a retaining wall and it would, it would be such a disaster for the city and the homeowner and the people walking.
If you put the wall in?
No, if we didn't put a, if we didn't finish it off. And then you would have, what, 20 feet of sidewalk and 20 feet of nothing and then another 20 feet of sidewalk.
It's about 125 feet total from where the Safe Routes to School project would stop at the curb return, about 125 feet from there to where we need to connect to the existing sidewalk.
So right now, when you'd walk over there, you could only walk on one side of the road because the other side doesn't have a sidewalk.
True. And it's called a Safe Routes to School project because there's a fair number of schoolchildren using that, but it really benefits the entire community from an access standpoint. I know you see that, I just...
Absolutely. No, I just, I think, when I'm thinking of things that absolutely like need funding, like if, that is a project we've talked a lot about, if it needs funding to get to, you know, the grant and get that moving with what we've already agreed to. Like that for me is absolutely, there's no question that we should spend funds towards that. I think when we're talking about connecting, you know, missing links of sidewalks, we have lots of those. And I think, thinking holistically around prioritization of those, for me, would be a part of that consideration. I would love to do all of them candidly and to the conversation if there's sidewalks on one side. We have areas where we have missing links of sidewalk, where there's not a sidewalk on the other side of the street and there's high pedestrian activity. So I guess that, those were the reasons behind my questions is just to understand, I want to make sure that...
I'm not sure Rich heard me earlier, or maybe he did, maybe he didn't. But I'd just like to look at that number holistically because there's also been a fair amount of inflation since we got that grant. So some of that money is going to have to cover that just on the basic project. And I will get you an answer.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Those are all my questions. I don't know if we're going into diving into the other, into thoughts, so I guess maybe I'll save it into lists and give other people the opportunity for questions. Thank you.
Who wants to go next? Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to add to Councilmember Laura Sonmore's comment about the streets and questioning that is, that I wanted to add that we didn't just quit funding streets and sidewalks. In the old City Hall, the chamber ceiling fell down and that cost 50,000 to clean up. And then we met as a city council in the library and then rented down at Redstone. And we were running out of money because it costs a lot of money to rent. So after three ballots to get a new City Hall, we finally did get a City Hall. And that's because it just took so long for our citizens to come up with and us in agreeing with what kind of City Hall we'd have. That cost us a lot of money because we had to rent a City Hall. So I just want to let anybody that's listening know that we didn't just quit fixing the roads. And the reason the roads are the way they are and we don't have sidewalks being built a little bit here and there is because we are running out of money so we could have a City Hall and run the city. So I just wanted to add that, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that's gone into this. And I think, you know, for my part, I really appreciate the sort of focus on efficiencies and, you know, risk management and allowing, you know, you all and the rest of staff to do your jobs efficiently. I think there are good sort of suite of options to choose from. Yes. Yes, you know, I think, you know, the state of roads is a real liability long term, and I guess, Phil, I have a question, sort of, you know, I understand, and I think you've spelled out the pavement preservation program well, you know, in terms of that and the hotbox truck, the asphalt hotbox truck, let me be clear, what sort of savings does that sort of provide to you and Public Works in terms of having, just having that?
I think all I can give you is kind of a qualitative answer. I tried to mention the inefficiency of doing potholes the old-fashioned way, by just hauling hot asphalt and using shovels. This would be much better. I think we'd be able to do a lot more potholes in a day, so there's a labor efficiency involved in that, especially this time of year, when the need is great. You know, you'd have a two-person crew working on it all day long, and they wouldn't, they wouldn't have to waste the time going back and forth to the batch plant. So there are savings, a little tough to put a dollar figure on it exactly.
All right.
But I think it's inherent in the expenditure, there would be a return on that. And it's part of a pavement preservation program, too. The sooner you get out there and fix that pothole and put a decent patch on it, not with cold mix, not with, you know, something that's only going to last a week, you're helping to preserve the underlying pavement as well as the road base, because moisture is what kills you in all of this.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, thank you. You know, I think, you know, body worn cameras are a no-brainer, I think, on all fronts, whether your community and/or an officer or us on council, I think it's, I'm there on that one as a priority. I will say, have a few, you know, as we get into sort of these bigger capital project options, you know, there, you know, Jeff, your top three are compelling, and have a couple of questions. You know, I wasn't able to be at the Transit Connector Corridor conversation. I've heard some, some feedback on that plan, and having sort of seen that, you know, project iteration sort of develop, or develop iteratively, have some thoughts about, you know, trail width, you know, I want to make sure we're sizing that connection to the transit center, you know, to the civic campus, to town center correctly. Heard some feedback about, you know, not feeling like, you know, six-foot trail width is wide enough to feel safe passing, you know, folks on their way, walking through the woods, even if the trails are lit, et cetera. Wondering if there are, you know, increments in funding that, of ARPA dollars that could go to sort of making those, those trails a little bit wider, or, you know, meeting, meeting sort of larger volume, you know, pedestrian pass-through there. I'm not sure we need to have that conversation now, but just wanted to put it out there for you. And then, you know, with the conversation around 216th and 48th, I'm really glad we're doing the, we've got that Safe Routes to Schools grant. I'll just say for my own part, you know, whether I'm driving, running, or bicycling through there, I really think that intersection demands a stop sign. I'll just be blunt, I think it's unacceptable not to have a stop sign there. I know that, you know, where that ship might have sailed, but I think for pedestrians and kids walking to school, we need to set a standard for vehicles to stop. So if, maybe I'm off on that.
That's an interesting point. I was just going to mention a couple things. One, the rectangular rapid flashing beacons, the pedestrian-activated signals, which I think you can, through our school education program that we do every year as well, in conjunction with City of Edmonds and their school district, we've shown success in teaching kids to use tools like that and to, you know, improve their behavior and their safety practices. But I think those would be a huge benefit there for the pedestrians. Doesn't do too much good for the bicyclists, other than allow you to avoid the pedestrians, because you'll see the lights as well. But I think it's a really good solution there. I'm not sure that we have the warrants, that, which, if that's not a concept you're familiar with, there's some published warrants that you're really not supposed to deviate from. So if you've got certain traffic volume, certain accident rates, certain metrics, then certain solutions come into play that should be used. And I don't think we meet warrants at that intersection for a two-way stop.
Okay.
So, which is why we would have designed it the way it has been designed.
Understood, and respectfully, I'd suggest that, you know, with vulnerable, you know, student, road users, putting the burden on them to, you know, cross there, just having seen the speed of vehicles pass through there, that's where I'm coming from, and, you know, and I'm diverting the conversation, so just wanted to.
There's nothing keeping us from adding them later when warrants are met as well, so.
Yeah. Well, and I think, again, just being proactive, I think it's, that'd be my preference. But along those lines, I think, you know, we hear a lot from folks in and around, or, you know, residents, about, you know, traffic safety concerns. You know, I know there's lots of unsigned intersections that, you know, you know, for whatever reasons in the past, or development patterns just haven't led to stop signs in certain residential areas where, you know, there aren't sidewalks, where, you know, traffic, you know, may or may not sort of proceed cautiously. And thinking that, you know, being diplomatic, as Councilmember Ryan, I think is acknowledging, you know, if there are opportunities to do, whether it's stop signs or low-cost, sort of traffic calming in neighborhoods where we are getting complaints, or even on, say, 44th, where, you know, I think most recently we've gotten some emails from concerned residents, would love to, you know, hear about what, you know, what staff ideas are and what associated costs might be. That said, you know, the pothole, road ballast, road surface conversation, the need is great, I want to acknowledge that, but that's some feedback from, from me. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Sonmore?
I know it was supposed to be quick, and we're going a little bit longer, but you know how government, they always say government takes so long to make a decision. And before I put one on the table, can I just ask, I saw Stefan came into us with a budget amendment for technology, and did you already get part of that money? It was an amendment, I think it was in November of last year or October. He put in, we received something, and he was requesting money for technology.
Well, there.
Oh, is it just the plan?
Yeah, there is $75,000, I think, put aside. It's in the memo, actually, that Nella overviewed, but it's, it's called the IT Strategic Plan and Structural Valuation. I'm sorry. Funding for IT Strategic Plan and Structural Valuation Consultant was $75,000. So that's already been approved by you for.
I just want, I was thinking it was, I'm sorry, I forgot, but I was thinking it was more for equipment. But I think that's, I guess, if we're going to make any acknowledgement tonight, I'd really like to make sure that we're doing that technology. I think that benefits the city staff, it benefits our employees, it benefits our bottom line, our budget, if something goes south. Next, I would do the body cam and the generator and the truck. If I was to put some items in order, they're kind of at the lower end of the budgets, but if we could tackle some of that, and I'd like to make the paving project its own separate project, but I think they need, we have to do something there, but I just wanted to, we have staff here, and just give them some direction, a little bit more of how we're tending to want to spend this money.
We're not going to make any decisions tonight, are we? No.
Excuse me. If there's a consensus by council to move forward on some of these things, we can prepare a budget amendment for Action Monday. So you wouldn't be taking action tonight, but if you indicate to staff that you'd like to see something before you on Monday, we're prepared to do that.
Did you go? Because I have, just, mine is probably shorter than yours.
Oh, Councilmember Woodard, you're first.
Thank you, Mayor. Fabulous list. I mean that sincerely. My concern is sequencing. It would have been interesting if we would have had this presentation before signing off on RFA and returning all the money, except for $50,000, because these were the types of projects I personally was referring to, that we do not have money for, but we have a need for. And I didn't have anything tangible to hold on to, and the stuff I put forward didn't take root. So in that regard, I empathize with your situation. That said, the other part about government being slow is it also seems to try to work in a vacuum, which is to remind us that we've been at this a long time. I am looking right now at the survey that we did of our residents, where, excuse me, some 121 took time to respond and give us some feedback on what they thought the priorities were. They came up with a nice, pretty little, or a chart, in case anybody needs to look for it. With that said, I had a hard time trying to place all of the requests before us in the various presentations into a color scheme that didn't fall into yellow, which was 21% infrastructure and amenities. Body cams, I suspect, would go into orange, which was public health and public safety. But I didn't hear household assistance in there, business nonprofits, replace lost revenues, perhaps there's some lost revenue in there I didn't quite pick up on. I guess I'm just saying, I'm having a hard time thinking we're going to make decisions without bringing all of the conversation in together, which the parlay there is to say, it'd be great if we had had our economic development team here with us, who can tell us about projects that are coming, which is, as I understand it, truly the only way we can raise money without raising taxes, to have an idea of, well, how much money are we talking about? Are there sequencing, to stick with that theme, of the presentation you've given us, that we could say, well, when this lands, we could perhaps go that direction. When this lands, perhaps we could add these on, as opposed to just everybody focusing on ARPA and it just being this idea of one-time services? And again, I mean, it's, that's what it's there for, but just trying to think through, how do we make sure that we are honoring a process, which, again, we literally have all been talking about, getting our residents involved, and I feel like if we were voting solely on what's in front of us right now, that we said, thanks for doing that, we were just doing that to check a box. We were always going to go in the yellow. I'm not comfortable with that, and I'm not saying that anybody else is comfortable with it, but just kind of recognizing that that's the challenge that I'm coming up with, is how do I find space for all of this to work? Recognizing, again, that ARPA is one set of dollars, the Mount Lake Terrace sits, I think, very well positioned to start raising money by development. I think I heard the Rogers Market space might launch pretty soon here. I imagine that's going to be a pretty penny. We know we have the site coming on here next to the station. I've heard that there's something coming down 60th, so overlooking everything, but again, these are all speculations, I suppose, but nonetheless, it'd be good to have us all together to be able to piece that out. I would also say, we, at one point, we said, hey, we're going to ask nonprofits to speak up, and I can name at least one that's been sitting out there quietly, waiting for us to do that, because she sat before us and even made a request to say, hey, the Foundation for Edmunds School District would like to present an idea to you all. Which is just my way of saying, I don't know how many others are out there who have thought that was going to be the case as well, to discover that they're not in here at all, again, from a sequencing standpoint. So this is my way of saying, I appreciate what's listed. I would love to see it all in front of us. I mean, clearly, you yourselves know that you weren't going to get everything, because you're already almost $2 million over, but we had, so clearly you weren't thinking you were getting everything tonight. But nonetheless, trying to find that balance, trying to figure out which ones really should have happened last year, which ones might hold on a little bit longer, and which ones have potential to partner. And an example I would give on the idea for the partnership, I think everybody knows I'm out of ARPA, so by no means am I picking on the parks, but just trying to think out loud about opportunities there. Ballenger Park Improvement, when I think east-west, I go, last I checked, west goes towards Edmunds, and I'm pretty sure Edmunds, on their side, were saying it's their time to start investing, so is there a partnership there? Instead of them going through some whole visioning process and putting up a swing set. I'm teasing you, Edmunds, I'm just saying that maybe there's a way to say, hey, here's an opportunity that this trail is going to connect and benefit your residents as well, which then brings that 500 down by who knows how many, but nonetheless, just kind of putting that out there, if there's other non-vacuumed opportunities, which, again, that would take that one off that list, knowing that, well, we got development coming, we also have other partners, maybe there's a different way to raise that money than on this ARPA list. Only pick parks because I love parks the most. I think if you went through all of these, you'd probably have examples of that. But again, the bigger picture here is, I feel like we've been playing in stages and kicking this can down the road, and we've forgotten streets that we passed, where folks were waiting for us to make a decision way back there, and now that we're here, may discover that they've been accidentally cut out of a process because of how long this takes. So, putting that out there, hopefully that made some pathway for you to follow on what I'm suggesting here, but I can also sign off on some of these tonight, because I think some of these are pretty straightforward, like, that's a good idea, period. But, you know, grander scheme of it all, I'd love to have all that together and know exactly what we're dealing with.
If I may, Madam Mayor, just to interject for one moment, I want to take responsibility for how all this was presented. It was, it was my intention to come forward with strictly a kind of a capital-only, infrastructure-only type of approach, knowing full well, in the few short months I've been here, I've heard from a number of council members about specific human services needs, community services needs, unique needs to the community, where in some cases, presentations had been made to several of you about specific requests, as recently as the one you mentioned from the School District Foundation. So I'm aware that those were out there. My intention this evening was to have department directors who feel or strongly about keeping the city ahead of the curve, which I do believe is related to economic development, to have the city be all that it can be, and to have the roads be drivable, and to have parks be beautiful, and to have technology be secure, with the understanding that these other requests would have to be handled. I had actually thought about coming in with a percentage, like, maybe the capital projects would only add up to maybe 80% of the total, so there'd be a set amount of funding that the council could decide how to deal with in terms of these other requests. I opted not to do that, I just put this all on the table. But I don't want you to think I've forgotten what I've heard from all of you. I felt this was a need, this was a way of kind of getting the ball rolling, because it has been kind of stalled for some time, as a kind of a next step, not a, not a final step, but a next step.
Go ahead.
I'd like to go back. My main concern is always safety. Safety first is what we always say at our house, but the one thing is looking at certain projects that are on this list, if they don't get touch, we are going to have to spend more later. Like, the generator, that's kind of like a no-brainer of looking at that, otherwise we can't. Do we really want to pay full price when we can have half-price? You know, the truck, to me, is, not the truck, but the box, is kind of a Band-Aid, but something. And the technology, Gary, we want to support you with the funding behind that, and get behind Gary and let him know that we do want to have that safety, because there's so much going on with technology and other things that are happening behind that, that we probably shouldn't talk about. But some of these things, I don't feel like we should wait any longer on, I think some that we should make decisions on.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Since I didn't share my thoughts, but we've kind of gotten to a place, I appreciate you giving me a chance to speak again. I guess I will just share really quick what, for me, it feels like are things, I'd be ready to quickly move on to the point, that I think some are things that seem like things we would have to do or should do from a, you know, life, health, and safety perspective. would have to do or should do from a, you know, life, health, and safety perspective or from a mitigation of risk perspective. I think for those, for me, are definitely the emergency generators. I think we navigated what it was like to not have those not too long ago, and it has real impact on our ability to serve our community. And I would hate to be in a prolonged situation without power where we didn't have access to that. So for me, that feels particularly if the RFA, you know, approval goes forward, and we have the opportunity to split some of that funding with the fire district, I think that's wonderful. The emergency response improvements, I think those radios, I mean, again, I think, thinking about how we are navigating in emergency situations, I think we want to make sure that we are prepared to support staff and supporting our residents as best possible, and that feels to me like a small investment to make to have that security. With Councilmember Sonmore, that hot box feels like a good temporary Band-Aid, at least, to address more readily some of the challenges with with street maintenance, as we figure out kind of what our bigger path forward plan is, which I am fully on board with figuring out. And then the body cameras, for me, were the other one, I think, when we talk about mitigating risk. I think Chief Kyle, you spoke very well to the why and would support moving forward with those. The only reason IT doesn't make the list for me, because I agree, Councilmember Sonmore, that it is absolutely critical that we address our IT infrastructure and protect it. I think the only thing for me is, we have that funding set aside for an IT strategic plan this year, and I guess for me, I would hope that we would get that plan in place and use that to inform where our investments are made, versus making those investments before that plan is in place. It feels a little bit like putting the cart before the horse, and I worry a little bit that that plan may lead us in a different direction than the investments that we maybe are thinking of now, and it just seems like, given we are going to bring in some, you know, outside expertise to give us thoughts, it would be helpful to hear those thoughts before we make significant investments. So that's my thoughts, and I'll.
Okay. So. I have just, I wish that I started writing the notes earlier, but I'll just check them off. What we can afford and what we can do immediately that we that I would like to see us spend our money on is the police cameras, the generator, the generator would need one. The hot box, because that's, I mean, I can see us saving so much money on that. And the radios. And then something that I've been hearing about for, from almost day one with our library is that HVAC system. We've got the money on this. It's $750,000, it's not cheap, but it's something that is never going to go away, and someday it's not going to work. It'll be, and that library is used daily. So that's on my list. And then, of course, the sidewalk for 48th and 216th, because if you would just go there, and you can see that this piece of property, the house sits up here, the sidewalk is down here. And so most of the sidewalks that you add, you know, the house is here and the sidewalk is here. So it's not going to be very expensive. But this particular piece of property, you know that the homeowner is probably never going to do anything about it, and it's, and it won't bother him, but it will be a, it will bother every single person who walks. And that section has a lot more pedestrians today than it used to. And for you to have a sidewalk here, and then no sidewalk for 120 feet, and then another sidewalk. But it's a sidewalk that actually has a wall next to it, because that's the topography. I just, I just think that that is something that is, this is a chance to get it done. And I think that the pedestrians who use that area is going to really, really thank us for that, because that is, well, we need to work on 48th a lot more, but I think that that is something that they're going to notice when we do that project. And then our roads, our roads are so bad, we have to do something, and so this is the beginning of something to do with. And I was looking at our, my neighborhood road, which is off of 48th, and I'm starting to walk again, and I cannot believe how much, it's called alligatoring, how much alligatoring there is on the side into the cul-de-sacs. And it's, and those, and those streets are not used as heavily as 44th or 48th, and yet that's happening, and that is city road. So. Pardon? Oh, it looks like an alligator, because they're all the, how do you explain it?
It's a lot of cracks. They all have a formal web, and so pieces of paper would be circumscribed by cracks, which means there's a loose B-city. It's shocking.
Mm-hmm.
But no one has been bitten yet by them, though.
So, and I'm trying to think of some, the other thing, which may or may not hit anybody's list, is improvements to Candy Cane Park. So, and Ballenger Park, but I think Ballenger Park, we, you know, we can continue to keep getting, I'm just trying to think, what can we get grants for? And what can we, you know, what do we need to get done today? I don't know if we can get a grant for a bathroom in Ballenger Park. And it's needed, and it's been needed, we needed it for all these years, and we haven't had one, and so, but again, it's a very underused park, probably because it doesn't have the amenities. So that's my two cents, and you, it's, you're next.
I'm adding up your totals. Mine was $9.65, yours was $8.50, and yours is very high.
Go ahead, Mayor Portman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you. I want to reiterate a point that was made earlier in discussion, is these are all very important and need to be funded, whether it's through ARPA or some other way. We've got to figure out how to be able to fund everything on this list, except for the firewall thing. I'm going to, I got to tell you, I think we need to be, we do need to be cautious, and there are so many tricks and things that, you know, people and scams and all of that stuff, that is insane what people can do out there. We also have to be careful about making things unusable when we do so. We've heard from some staff that have been unable to use their computers for the purposes they needed to use it for because of firewalls. I am personally locked out of, when I'm traveling, I'm unable to use this, anything Mount Lake Terrace. So we find, what happens, we end up finding workarounds, and then the, what we've invested in, technology-wise, then becomes useless, because we're not using it. So just a flag on that one to make, to be aware of what and how we're going about utilizing and implementing security measures and firewalls. Don't disagree that they are needed, they are, but let's just be aware of the impacts and what ends up happening, and whether or not people end up finding workarounds and stop using the investments that we're putting in, which gets back to another point that Councilmember Murray made, I absolutely agree. These are important things on the information technology list, but we have an IT strat plan that needs to come together first. It doesn't make sense to make investments and then have, and then do our plan, and then realize that we have other things that need to happen. So I think there are maybe some, some initial investments that could be made on things like laptops that need to be functional for our staff, so that our staff are able to use, you know, use the laptops now sooner than later. So I'd be comfortable with that. But for overall, I would suggest we hold back on the, a lot of the information technology until we have the strat plan. Again, not saying that it's not important, it is important, we need to get there. Another thing that I want to make sure that we are addressing in the information technology is expanding our broadband network access in our community. And that was, that was one of our community, our goals, something we've been talking about. There's something that several of our citizens, our residents have complained about, and it's also important for improving access and making it available to everyone in our community, and I want to, I'm going to get back on touching on that subject in a minute. So let me just go back up to the top, parks and recreation, actually, overall, I think, the mayor pointed it out, you know, that we need to fund all of this stuff. Some of these things are more likely to be funded through grants than others. So I think we need to take a look, and I guess that would be the challenge I put back on you guys, to, let's take a look at this list and figure out, for instance, and timing might be an issue, but as an example, the Transportation Safety and Accessibility Improvements Project, I just talked about the PSRC, United States DOT Safe Streets Grants that are now available. So we should be applying and utilizing that. Now, you can come back and tell me that the timing is off and won't work, and we need that money now, and those, the money we, the grants we've got would expire by the time that happens, and that's valid reasoning. But I, but as, my point is, there are grants that are out there that we could be able to utilize, and so we need to take a hard and close look at that. I was going to, body, police body cameras, absolutely, we need to get it, federal grants. Is that, is there an opportunity to be able to access federal dollars, to bring some of those, some more of those federal dollars home, to be able to use for our, for the body cameras? So, so think about that. By the way, Ballenger Park, Edmonds is, has invested, in fact, in their last budget. We'll, I understand we're going to be talking about that in the next coming months, but Edmonds has, in fact, invested in some improvements to Ballenger Park to make that more accessible for Edmonds residents on that side, be able to utilize and take advantage of this great asset that we all share as a regional park. The arts plan update, I had, I thought we funded that in the budget. We, we set aside, what I recall in the last iteration, because there was the discussion between arts and DEIC, is that we said $30,000 for DEIC and $30,000 for the arts strat plan. If that didn't get funded, we need to take another look at that budget, because that's what we discussed, and that's what I believe, I mean, not that I would have voted no, but... Yeah, anyway, I think that we need to take a, take another look at, yeah, no, I understand, but I, I wanted to go back and take a look at the budget notes and the presentation that Stefan gave, because I was specifically calling that out as an important piece, that we need a strat plan for both arts and DEIC and the work plans and the consultant, et cetera. So if that didn't get funded, then, at any rate, I agree that we need to have the arts strat plan updated, and so if it's not funded in the budget, then we need to get it in there, and I would support that, but, but it should have been funding in the budget.
Well, if I may interrupt, there is the non-ARPA part of the '23-'24 budget, and there was discussion about consulting services for both DEIC and arts, and there's also discussion about events money. And in one of the discussions, there was a lot of overlap in terms of a lump sum and how it would be a portion, depending on how much consulting dollars were actually necessary for DEIC and for arts.
Right, and one of the points I was making was during that, that discussion, is that we need to separate the plan from the events. And so there was combined funding for events to be able to support both diversity, you know, celebrating diversity and culture, and, and funding for arts events, et cetera. And then there was a separate piece that was supposed to be for the planning, the strategic planning for what, both for DEIC and for the arts. Anyway, just, let's take a deep dive on that one, because, if we can, because I, I agree, if it's not funded in the budget, then, then I want to see it funded here, but I, there should have been at least some dollars set aside in the budget. Anyway. And then getting, and I would, I would say I would agree with the emergency generators at City Hall and Police, I mean, that is, that is, we have an opportunity to be able to cut the total costs in half with the fire district and be able to, so we just need to set those dollars aside and utilize that. That's a, that's a, one of the top-of-the-list no-brainers, I think, needs to be done. Library and HVAC, that, again, that's one that's been around forever and needs to be done. But my question then would be, what about bonding and utilizing some of our ability to utilize debt? And is that better used here, better used somewhere else, whatever? It's just, and again, I'm just, I'm throwing these things back as a challenge, because we don't, because it's, it's $6.5 million and, or whatever, and of ass, and we have $5 million, and we can't do it at all. Plus, I have some other things I'm going to add on in a minute. Okay, so then, let's see. Yeah, okay, oh, okay, so then, you know, one of the areas that did not cover, and you get back to the survey, I appreciate you raising that point, Councilmember Woodard, earlier, you know, we've done, there's, we're doing a lot of funding for the community, public safety, and, and for infrastructure, which we're high on the list. You know what area we haven't put a whole lot of funding into is the household assistance, which was, you know, 20-some percent of, another quarter, that was basically almost, you know, there are three key areas of, that the public wanted to see assistance, they wanted to be using those ARPA dollars for, and a significant piece of that was household assistance. And, and the challenge is, of course, that these are one-time dollars, and a lot of the household assistance is ongoing needs. That said, I believe there are some opportunities for us. You may recall, last year, presented the Road to Recovery sheet, and some ideas on how to serve our underserved and those in need in our community, to help with community health, safety, and household assistance. I would really like to see us identify those households that are in need, and then be able to utilize our community navigators and social workers and, and other ambassadors and cops and clergy programs and whatever, to direct those people that we know are in need to the right services. And I know there's different programs out there, I know the school district is a resource, the VOA is a resource, there are other, the county is a resource. Well, let's tap into those resources, but there is a, if there are some initial costs that we need to utilize for, by the way, the translation services, transcription, identifying people, identifying groups, and who these people are, and then being able to help them navigate this huge web of social services that are out there that we can't afford to provide ourselves, but we sure, it sure would be great to be able to direct those people that are in need to those resources and be able to tap into those resources, particularly before they fall through the cracks and end up homeless, which is another whole issue that we're fighting against. And if we can help those people before they become homeless by giving them, getting, directing them to the resources that are available, this would be a huge opportunity. And so I'd really like to see us set aside, I don't know how many thousands of dollars it would cost, but it's not, it doesn't need to be millions, but, but I, put, work together with the, with the other agencies and programs that are out there, figure out how to identify those that are falling through the cracks, or about to fall through the cracks, or in need, and the school district has a great idea of, of, you know, particularly the families in the school, the kids that are in need. But let's, let's identify those people. people and then utilize these other programs and, and/or develop our other programs like cops and clergy, community ambassadors and navigators, et cetera, to get them the help they need. So I'd really like to see us utilize some funding for that program. The other area, another area that I, I think is critical, and we've talked about, is pivoting to the new economy, and helping businesses and any generation, I mean, particularly the younger generation, getting ready to take jobs and doing some work training programs. But, you know, there's a lot of people that are no longer in the workforce, that are struggling to figure out, there's a lot of jobs available, but they're, they're struggling to figure out where their role is, where their place is. And so there's, I'd like to see us invest in some work training programs to help, help get people into the jobs or find jobs or be trained for the, for the new jobs and that, that are, that are out there and, and available. There's, I know that Edmonds and Linwood, for instance, have done some great programs, just setting aside some dollars and working with the community colleges, Shoreline and Edmonds and others to be able to say, okay, for all, any, for them, they've said, any students in Linwood have access to these dollars to be able to use for these work training programs. And Edmonds has done the same thing. Well, we should be doing the same thing for our students, our, our folks here in Mount Lake Terrace, to be able to provide them the funds to able, give them the work training program, access to work training programs that are available in our region. And, oh, the other, the other thing I'd like to see us do, and maybe these aren't, this isn't the time or place yet, because just like we need an IT strat plan, we need an economic development strat plan for small business incubator programs, or something like that. I, I think that one day, we need to be investing in some small business incubator programs. And again, I've, I've been holding back forever on all these ideas for economic development that I, I'm anxious to do. But I mean, so many people have done such great things that we, that we've learned about at AWC conferences over the years, and we haven't been able to talk about here, because we're still behind the ball. So that is one of those things that I'd like to see us moving forward with, but maybe, maybe I'll hold back on that. But I'd like to see us put some dollars into workforce development programs and into identifying the households in need and providing, to be able to direct them to the assistance. So those are two key areas, and then expanding our broadband network access, you know, maybe, and, and maybe that needs to be part of the IT plan, but that's broader than that. It's not just our individual IT needs here in the city and for the city staff and building. It's expanding access, broadband access to all of our residents, and making sure that all of our residents have access to strong, you know, even, even those that have access have weak access, I guess. I mean, you know, we, we were just hearing from somebody that moved up here from California, had been living and working in California, who had great broadband networks down there, and the speed to the network was instantaneous. And then they come here and they feel like they're, they're being drug along by snails. And so we need to improve our broadband access to our entire community, not just City Hall. Therein lies a summary of my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll pose a quick question. I know that Councilmember Salmer wants to address something as well, but Mayor Protem Wall, would a, a grants coordinator position, and I expose this as much a question to you as, as it is to staff, would, would a sort of FTE or some other sort of set aside for a staff position to, to help facilitate and compete for, for grants? I think you, you raise a really terrific point in terms of, you know, parsing out what, where opportunities lie and with immediate need versus, you know, where, where can we go compete? Because I think we do punch above our weight when it comes to, to grant seeking. Would that be a feasible or appropriate use for, for these monies?
Yeah, I think, I know that ideas come up before, and a number of municipal organizations do things like that. I believe the response at the time, I'm not sure if it was Stefan's response, I don't think it was mine, but, but a valid response is that we're not necessarily of the size to warrant to do that, and that for, you know, for example, Public Works, as difficult as it's been lately, they do an exemplary job of, of pursuing specific infrastructure-oriented grants. The police department has some administrative capacity when there's grants as well. So each, each department, at least in my opinion, has some capability to follow their, parks for sure, their, their opportunities. So to, to have one person be trying to do it all, I think, would be perhaps too general, and I, I, I don't know that that's a problem for us right now.
Well, thanks for entertaining the new guy question. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor, because it's related to the new guy. That's another example, as Mayor Protem pointed out, that I thought we did talk about this, and we were going to pursue it through ARPA, and it wasn't going to be a full-time position, it was going to be hourly money, if you will. We would be able to hire folks to write grants, and we were parlaying that with, giving the commissions, their monies, the art commission, DEI, a new work plan, and then somebody there to help execute all of that as they come up with ideas. So that's one of those, I'm like, I would love to go over that, because I felt like we were given a sheet, and all I remember out of that sheet was DEI's being the only money that wasn't in the general fund. It got kicked over to ARPA, because I made a point, I thought that was really ironic. But nonetheless, now I feel like, well, is there money in here? Because that was kind of what I was talking about, is that it's going to get lost in the shuffle, if it's not attached to the general fund like the others are. So, so I'm asking for a recount, or whatever the heck is considered as well, because what did we agree on is now on the table for me to say, well, I let some of that go out of the general fund, because it was supposed to make it into ARPA. But this is again, now we're having this discussion about, well, how many ARPA discussions have we had? And again, we're looking at $6 million worth of requests with 4.9 on the table. So it's like, well, it's not even 4.9, because we actually said we would do those things when we pass the general fund, not we'll revisit it and decide if we want to do it. That was literally my concern. And I was told, oh, no, no, when it comes up again in two years, or in the next year, everyone will have to submit a, here's how much money I need. That's why I'm like, it's sticking out in my mind, but I don't see it in here. That's what I'm suggesting. So, there's a couple in there, I feel like. We should probably look back at that, because I think we did say we're doing these things, but I don't know where they fall.
Well, as I mentioned, there is the, the non-ARPA part of the 2324 budget, which is not in front of me, I'm looking at the ARPA list. And I know some things such as the DEIC Strategic Plan was targeted for ARPA, because it was viewed as a one-time project. And so I think that was the rationale at the time. Yeah, the work plan and events that was seen as, as a one-time thing. But yeah, there, there were some fairly arbitrary decisions during the budget process to target ARPA money for certain things. But, you know, the budget, without oversimplifying, I mean, the budget is the budget. I mean, whether it's in this category or, or another, if we funded certain things, then we ought not to be discussing them tonight, we ought to be just doing them. And I think that, and again, as Councilmember Wall brought up, the, the arts plan is something I, I know, I know it did get talked about, so we need to kind of review that again to see where that is. You know, my intent tonight was not to, to get back into the, you know, the strategic plan competition about boards and commissions and, and arts, because we, we spent so much time doing that a few months ago. My intent was to, to really focus on two things. One was some staff-developed specific capital item projects that might have enough council interest, and I'm sensing with a couple of them, a few of them, they do, to, to actually bring that back for a budget amendment to, to do them. And then secondly, was to attempt to narrow down the, the non-capital part of what council members have spoken about as recently as, as the last few minutes, about things that we, we could be doing, and, and how to focus on, on doing that. So the staff can be supportive of the council if we, if we had a sense as to which things you want to pursue, and then we can actually do some research as to, you know, what is the state of the art, what is out there, you know, how do social service agencies in our community do triaging and identifying households in need, what are the gaps? There are some cities, including ones that I've managed, where they set aside 1% of their general fund every year, and they go through a, a process, it's somewhat competitive process, where agencies can apply for funding in certain strategic goal areas, and then a year later, they have to be evaluated to see if, in fact, they did what they said they would do. But that's been going on in, in the city where I was. It's still going on now that, even though I'm not there, but that was something that that city felt it needed to do because of the number of people in need in that city. So that, that's an option that doesn't depend on ARPA, but that's certainly an option that the city might want to consider. So there, so point one was, do you want to fund any of these capital things at this point in time, which we can prepare for Monday to do? And then point two is, do you want to give us some direction as to what you'd like staff to come back with, you know, in the next couple of months, even though I won't necessarily be a part of it, but to come back with specifics as to what might, what it might look like to, to meet the needs of what you'd like to see happen?
Can I put the, your comments up here? I don't know if you can see it, it might be too small. So here's the funding sources that the staff has been, have submitted. And then I put your initials up here. And I made a note of the things that you had said you were interested in for these items, just so I could get a total and...
Can I go off of what she's saying? Can, so one of the things I'd like to bring back is to educate, educate the council of what's going on with security and the really need to get an extra firewall or a firewall, additional firewall. And I can see where you're coming from on certain things, and I understand waiting on the laptops and stuff, but I think there's an urgency. And I think that maybe we can get a report out on what's going on and why there's an urgency for that, and some of the things that are happening with computers and the viruses and shutting a city down, because things aren't happening right. But I would like to at least make one decision tonight, because I know that's what you, we were kind of just talking about. In, in order to make that decision, I'd like to ask the staff what they think would be the number one item on the list that they believe would be something that we should consider. Could, do you have a consent? I know you're all on different departments, and y'all are fighting for those dollars, but is there one thing that you all believe that the city should have or do?
Well, that's a difficult question for the staff to answer, since they now wear different hats. But if you don't, I don't mind giving you my opinion for what it's worth. But, I mean, I'm sensing, I mean, the staff is very supportive of just moving this agenda forward, knowing full well that there are other opportunities for funding, there are other grant potentials as well. You know, I, we're clearly hearing, well, I think we're all hearing, you know, in terms of the emergency generators, especially with the leveraging from South County Fire, that that's something that's important to do. And I've heard a number of you say that you would be willing to do that at this point. I'm also hearing a number of you support the police body cameras, even though as one of you, as Councilmember Wall said, that there's a, a potential for, for a grant, but we're not, I don't think the chief is aware of a specific grant, especially if every city is, is about to do the same thing. So I'm hearing a number of you say that that's important to do, as well as the emergency response, the radios, the 800 megahertz radios for Public Works, which is related to emergencies as well. So those, those three items, which total a million dollars, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing some support for those three items from you. And, and I think the staff, well, I, I know the staff will respect that as well. I don't know that, you know, when it comes to the, the big ticket items at the parks, you know, as you've all acknowledged, they, they need to be done. If they're not going to be done, they'll be done at some point. And the pavement preservation program is the biggest single-ticket item in this whole package. A few of you pulled out the, not the truck, but the...
Hot box?
Hot box as a part of that. But at first, I thought you were talking about the whole thing, but then I realized you're only talking about the hot box, not the whole preservation program. And I'm sure the Public Works Director has already explained why the pavement preservation program is important. You know, the technology, you've all acknowledged, is important as well. However, a number of you were fairly persuasive in saying that if we're about to kick off the strategic plan, it, it might make sense to hold that for a little while. Although I would argue, with this idea of remote work, that the laptops, you know, if, if we need more laptop money, I would think that that might be one thing that would be pulled out, because the strat plan is not going to tell you not to get laptops. That's just my thoughts, as one staff member.
Yeah, in this day and age, if we're going to let people work from home, there's going to have to be a better firewall and certain parameters done of what's going on in this day and age.
Yeah, except that I don't use certain things now because of the firewalls, so...
And, and it's going to get worse.
Yeah, but anyway, but I agree that laptops, I, I would support funding laptops. I would also suggest, because it is important, that maybe rather than funding these specific programs in IT, but we set aside a certain amount of dollars to be tapped to help fund the implementation of the IT strat plan once it's done. So in other words, you know, maybe we say, set aside $100,000 or $150,000 of ARPA dollars to be used for IT once the, the plan is done. And then, and I agree on, on the emergency response improvements and emergency generators, I think we can, it sounds like we all agree that that is something we can put on a council bill and approve on Monday night. And I'd be willing to go with body cameras as well, if, if you think that, that it's, that, that you're not aware of any opportunities, or we don't think, we, we face, if we don't think we can get money from the feds to be able to fund that, then yes, let's do it. But if you think that we might be able to access some dollars from the feds to be able to do it, then...
I had a really good conversation with Congresswoman Delbetti when she was here, and we talked for a second, and she admitted and said, I had a good conversation with Congresswoman Delbetti when she was here on that very subject. She spent an hour with me, which I was flattered with, actually. But she admitted that there's, there's lots of money out there, but there's so much competition. We're product, too late to the, to the ball here, I think, to really make a meaningful impact. A lot of really big cities are in line first, with really big bills.
Yeah, sure. So in, in that, that being the case, I would also support putting that on the, the bill for Monday night. And, and if we do happen to get money, federal dollars in the process, then great, then we can use, then we can use these dollars in another way. But, but anyway, no, that's, that's, that sounds good. And then I have a question for Phil on the pavement preservation program. That is, I, I think, you know, we all recognize the need and, and want to improve our streets, and we recognize that we have fallen way behind on, on just basic maintenance of our streets, and we need to get back on the ball. Is there a way, how flexible are, are those dollars? I mean, that, we know that that doesn't even fund at all, right? But is there, would say, one and a half million dollars instead of 2.2 be, you know, be, be worth the investment, or, or does that just fall too short?
Well, it's a good question. Yeah, I mean, that was proposed as four years, at what we thought was about the right size, maybe. You could do two years, you could do three years. It, it needs to be done frequently. This obviously is not even a one-time cost. I'd like to think it is, but...
I'd like to think it is, but it's not. Pavement management is just a real expensive maintenance function and we just haven't been doing it for quite a while, so we built up a fair backlog here. Be nice to, you know, take that down a ways. I was going to mention another thing. You did fund in the 23 budget, if you remember the phrase asphalt zipper, that's a catchy term. That was $180,000 and you funded that, so we'll be out purchasing that. That gives us the ability on our own, with our own crews, to go out, take places like 56th and chew out those spots that are really bad and put a much larger patch in there. Those are helpful. We can seal cracks, we can fill potholes, but that is kind of masking the over-underlying problem, which is we don't have a paving program. And I think you'll have a lot of data, you know, soon, I hope, maybe by fall, from our pavement condition index study, but it, your eyes don't lie to you. The streets are, you know, getting worse and it's happening noticeably faster now when you're not doing anything out there. So, anything is helpful. I'll just put it that way to answer your question. Any of that would be helpful.
So, in other words, if you did a two-year program as opposed to a four-year program, it would be...
Right.
One million and then if you threw in the hot box, that's 215. So, for 1.215, you'd have a two-year program plus a hot box.
Right. I put four in there because of the timing on the ARPA funding. You have to spend it by '26, so this would be '23, '24, '25, '26, but whatever fits into the overall plan here would be helpful, of course, absolutely.
Yeah, and I guess, and I'm not saying that we wouldn't go for the full 2.2 after further discussion, but perhaps I'd be recognizing the need and the desire to get going sooner than later, I'd be willing to put 1.2 or whatever on the table for the agenda for Monday night just to be able to get, get the program started, if that's something everybody could get around.
I guess I have a question for you, Mayor Protem Wal. So, we've talked a lot about one-time funds versus ongoing needs and there's been a strong, I think, rally around not allocating ARPA funds for ongoing needs. And so, I guess my question is, we recognize this as an ongoing need, we haven't had a conversation as a council about how we address the ongoing need of pavement, pavement preservation. I guess, for me, that's the question mark. So, yeah, I would love to hear your thoughts.
I got, I got two thoughts on that. One is, and most importantly, these are capital dollars. So, capital dollars are one-time, you know, by definition. Two is, we've got a lot of catch-up to do. And so, this is just a down payment on catching up.
What do we do once we're caught up though?
We fully fund our, maintaining our streets.
I think there's a lot of what, I mean, one-time money is a nice catchphrase, but a lot of this stuff isn't really one-time. Those radios will have to be replaced. Everything that you buy is going to eventually wear out, be replaced, whether it's a roof or an HVAC system or anything else. So, it's more maybe the length of time that the asset will be in play and be functional. Paving, you know, can last 30 to 40 years in a residential street, 15 to 20 years maybe on an arterial street. So, those are very long-term investments. But I'm being honest with you, eventually you still do have to do it again and you can do with that what you will, but I just think so many things really aren't truly a one-time expense.
Yeah.
That's fair, thank you. I guess, yeah, I would go back to, I would be very willing to invest these funds if we also talked about how we're going to fund the program into the future because, well, because the investment isn't going to last if we're not maintaining it, right? And so, I guess if we're not going to find a way to maintain it, I would rather use those funds elsewhere. If we're going to, if we're going to commit to finding those funds, then I think that would be a good conversation and a good investment.
Yeah, I think we've, several of us had, have talked about the need to have that conversation and are very interested in, in having that conversation. So, I would, I'd be happy to add that caveat on to...
One, potential compromise, and I know I'm interrupting someone, but if, if you wanted to do what I've heard a number of you, not all of you, but a number of you speak about doing, you could end up this evening committing to revisit on Monday roughly half, 2.365, which is about half of the, the 4.6 that's, that's available. In other words, you could deal with half, move it forward and have another $2.3 million for further discussion a month or two from now. And to be real specific, what I'm talking about is, is a two-year pavement preservation plus the asphalt hot box for 1.215, the emergency generators for 550, the emergency response improvements, the 800 megahertz for 200, the body cameras for 250, and then 150 for IT technology consistent with the strategic plan. And that would total 2.365, which is coincidentally about half of what you have. So, that's, that's a potential compromise that reflects bits and pieces of what a number of you have said. And I know you're not voting on anything tonight, but if there's a consensus that this makes sense to bring back on to Monday, on Monday, we can do that.
Repeat?
I'm sorry, repeat it?
Can you repeat?
Yeah.
What did you say? Because I have...
Okay.
......
Well, but, yeah, some of the things are not, they're modifications of what's proposed.
So, instead of the 21,900, it's 150?
Yeah, yeah, that was, yeah, we, and again, there's some disagreement as to the priorities, but there's a recognition that we're launching this strat plan, but $150,000 is, by coincidence, it's about half of the total of the IT proposals, but it shows an indication moving forward. So, if, if I'm being asked to go through the list again, I'll do so. The pavement preservation plan for a two-year period to include the asphalt hot box is 1.215. The emergency generator split with South County Fire is 550,000. The emergency response improvements, which are the radios for Public Works, are 200,000. The body, I'm sorry.
How about the ER radios?
Yeah, the emergency response improvements, the third bullet under Public Works is 200,000. The body cameras for police are 250,000. And then the last is the, the IT general, well, a general, a funding of 150 IT with the understanding that the strategic plan is being launched, which it is. Garrett's going over the RSP as we speak, so we can launch that and then, and then stay on top of the things we need to do, at least for now. So, anyway, what I, those numbers, at least with my smartphone calculator, add up to 2.365. And you're shaking your head, okay, so you agree with that? Okay. And that's, that's about half of the 4.6 something that's left here.
So, we're not over 2.2 million left?
Okay.
Can I ask Phil something?
Yes.
When do we have to do the project on 48th and 216th by, or else we'll lose that money?
I don't have that right off the top of my head, but I know it's sat there for a couple of years now and they haven't pulled it back and I expect that would not last too much longer, so. And we're ready pretty much to go out and do the project even this year. You know, we're finishing up the design right now, but it's not a, there's not that many working days involved in actually building these things, so I think we can finish that project yet this year if we get started. I could give you some more information on that if you...
Well, I just wanted to know, if, if we didn't fund it through here, do we have any other means of funding it from the city?
Well, Rich is on the line. He and I talked about this today, thinking that we do have some money built up in impact fees, transportation impact fees, but we had a pretty spirited discussion today whether we could even use those monies on this project. Those are for growth-related projects. It's not obvious to me how to characterize this project as a growth-related project.
Safety, no...
And we're trying to get a more explicit answer on that in the next couple of days. That would be a possible backup plan. So, if that pans out, that might be another way to do it, but then, of course, you have a finite pot of money in that source too. That's kind of one-time money and we're shopping around for Main Street Phase Two and other things that we want to do and that can come out of the growth management, the transportation impact fees, yeah.
So, if we, if there was another source for, for some money for that and we, so we didn't fund all 460, if we funded 200, would that help?
Well, that's, your earlier question was a good one. I'm, I still need to parse out with Rich in our cost estimate, how much of that was just frankly inflation over two or three years and how much of it is the wall and the sidewalk? And I can get you that answer tomorrow.
Okay, then we'll know better...
Yes.
...whether or not to add that in. Because we still have some money for that in, in our next talk. But I, but I didn't want to wait for the next talk if we had a deadline of having to get this project done before we lose the money.
Right.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Could I make a suggestion? Could we just add that if there are costs involved with that project, that we need to have in order to move forward with it because costs have increased, not because we want to increase the scope, but to cover the scope that we've already approved, that we include those as part of Monday's agenda? Does that feel...
Yeah, I think, yeah, Phil won't be here Monday, but you'll, you'll have to let us know tomorrow whether...
Who will?
Okay.
So, that's...
So, what I'm, and what is the dollar amount if that were added?
200?
Okay, so, so what I think I'm hearing is a consensus of sorts to bring forward a budget amendment ordinance on Monday in the amount of the 2.365, 2,365,000, with the potential of it being slightly higher depending on the information that we may, may get, you know, with the understanding that there's still over $2 million left to further discuss when your new city manager convenes you in a retreat sometime in the next couple of months.
Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I, I mean, I guess, I'm excited that we're moving forward with this, a good piece and putting a, a down payment, but there, there are some things that haven't been funded. There are some things that we've talked about that I'd like to see us get some dollars for and, and some questions, some hard questions as far as probability or possibility for getting grant dollars or funding it through other mechanisms, utilizing debt. So, and for that matter, a whole, whole discussion about infrastructure and how we're going to fund it. But, but I think that, that I, I think we've laid some questions on the table and provided maybe some additional direction to get more information for us to be able to have that conversation, for our, for our next conversation on how we're going to tap into the remaining 2 million-ish.
Yeah, and as I mentioned at the outset of the meeting this evening, I'm, I've got a couple of dates set aside for meetings with the new city manager in the next few weeks before I leave and so, I'm sure he will, he will get the information that I'll be sharing about desires that council members have for a more focused, specific approach to using some of that money. You know, the amount of the money, of course, remains to be seen, but the specifics as to the kinds of programs, you've been fairly clear over the course of time as to things you'd like to see. And keep in mind, it's not, it's not all of you saying it, it's different ones of you saying it. So, part of the challenge is to put this together so we're meeting as many of your, we're meeting a consensus approach so we can get something funded. But yeah, I'm, I'm being long-winded in saying, yes, we can, we can get more information. So, the next time you convene in a, an ARPA workshop discussion such as this one, it'll have the more focused answers to the grant opportunity questions as well as the human service resource questions.
Yeah, very good, appreciate it, thank you.
Well, Rory P. Donovan, first and then.
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, I want to state basically what Councilmember Walz said it a different way. I'm very comfortable with the approach that the city manager lays out with the priorities listed, but also I think we need to honor, you know, community priorities and have a robust conversation about what that looks like. And I think Councilmember Woodard and Mayor Protem Wal have, well, and as, as we all have really spelled out, the need to sort of be, be a bit more thoughtful and strategic in what and how we, we fund with, with this, you know, pot of money. Thanks.
I agree with that statement also, but my question would be on the 216th Street. We need 200,000, it sounded like?
I was just guessing.
Yeah, guessing? Yeah. Because, yeah, okay, because I, I guess we need to know then how much that grant funding is and when it ends? Okay, that, that's all, thanks.
Anyone else? Oh, I didn't think we'd get this far. So, yes. So, if that will be on Monday night, okay. And I think that's it. I don't think we have anything else to add? Everybody got a little bit? I hope?
Yeah, I took the generator.
Oh, no, no, he got the generator.
We're not, and we're not done yet either, because, for instance, that's another question, is the ARPS strat plan, did we get funding in the budget, general budget for that or not?
And I'll look, yeah, I'll check, I don't think.
Well, somebody, somebody did something wrong.
Yeah, I think it's...
We didn't talk about it. There should, should have been. Oh, oh, no, I probably don't want that on anyway.
I guess that is it for ARPA for tonight. Thank you for staying around.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to take a three-minute break.
Are we, are we just going to...
Oh, we...
Public comment and public...
Public comment. I've been here over to a person, I need to run. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have not received any public comments for today, however, we have one attendee in the virtual audience. So, anyone in the audio, in the virtual audience could like to comment, please use hand raised He's William Pay, William Pete raising hands.
Okay. So, how do we get him on?
Yeah. So, Mr. William Pete, I have unmute you, so please, you have five minutes to comment. Three minutes, sorry.
Okay, thank you. To council members and interim city manager, I really appreciated the opportunity to, to listen to the discussion regarding, you know, the ARPA funds. And I would like you to consider when you get back to ARPA funding discussion, particularly around the Ballenger Park and Terrace Creek Park, suggestions. I know that this sounds like that's not going to be part of the discussion this coming Monday, but if that is revisited, one of the things that was mentioned was bathrooms, you know, in the Ballenger Park. And I'm hoping that that discussion with bathrooms will also include the possibility of non-gender, a non... will also include the possibility of non-gender, a non-gender bathroom, you know, when we're talking about those bathrooms. That has come up quite a bit, you know, with, with the DEI, it's come up with folks that have heard about the DEI, talking about that, so I am hoping that, that that's part of that discussion. Also, I have, we've talked a lot about multi-language welcome signage. I think that, you know, we're considering beautifying the various parks, whether it's Ballenger, Terrace, Candy Cane Park, that when you talk about spending those dollars, you talk about not multi-language welcome signs. I was in the Ballenger Park the other day, and I was just looking at the construction of the playground, and I'm sitting there thinking to myself, you know, who's going to use this? And I'm thinking of the diversity of people that are going to probably bring their kids to that, and I know there's a little plaque that's sitting there now that kind of explains what the purpose of that playground is, but I think that in the final, in the final part of putting that all together, I hope that you consider putting a multi-language welcome sign, you know, in that area, as well as, while doing that, you think of putting multi-language signs in other places in some of our other parks. The police department agreed and are in the process now of getting pricing to put a multi-language sign in the front of their building, and I hope that that discussion can take place for a similar type, a multi-language sign to be placed in City Hall. So I didn't need the whole five minutes, but that's my public comment for tonight.
Thank you. Okay, so now we can move on to the next review of the agenda for Monday night. Does anyone have any comments on that? Then we'll go on to council comments. Does anyone have any council comments? Go ahead, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. So had quite a robust conversation at yesterday's DEIC meeting, and I will have lots to share as part of my liaison report on Monday, but one thing that is particularly timely, so I wanted to bring it up tonight, is that Ramadan starts next week, and the DEIC would like us to make a proclamation around Ramadan on Monday, given that it does start next week, and so I wanted to bring that up. They are looking at ways, some ways to bring some action around that proclamation, and we will hear more about that as there's more details, and wanted to at least, you know, make a proclamation and recognize that we are going into that holy month for them, and just wanted to ensure that the council didn't have any questions before staff worked on that here tomorrow and Monday. Awesome, all right, that's all I got, thank you.
I just wonder if staff can get it?
Well, I did Dr. Councilmember Rory earlier, we would need some assistance with the language, and she said she would work on getting that to me.
Mayor, I just suggest that maybe we could add that to the agenda for Monday for consideration.
Okay.
If that's not too quick a turnaround. Perhaps it is.
To be read?
You mean to? Yeah, yeah, we would have to get the proclamation written tomorrow and then brought forward on Monday, so, I mean, it's not on the agenda as it stands, but if we can get assistance with the content, I don't see any problem in getting it forward, as long as there's support for doing so.
I just, sorry for butting in, since Ramadan does start on March 22nd, I think, you know, that would be a nice way to honor the holy month. If we can get it on Monday, that is. Thank you.
That's all the audience, raise hand again, so.
Pardon?
The audience raised hand again, so.
Oh, but he doesn't talk during council comments. Go ahead, Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. With the Ramadan, we'd be, what would the proclamation state?
Well, that's what they're going to have to write. I would, I would hope that it would explain what it is and what, and who celebrates it, and how long it is, and what you do during Ramadan, so that other people will understand their culture and help them out when they can't eat anything.
Okay, great, thank you.
Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Two items. The first one's revisiting, which was, you know, you say things into the microphone, you wondered, did anything happen? And you don't think it did. I brought up how the water bills listed that if you had outstanding balances from 220 to 221, that reach out and will help you, and I pointed out, well, we just wrapped up 222. I'm pretty sure there's still quite a bit of money sitting there, and I was wondering whether or not we could add 21 to 22 in there, but then I wasn't sure, what's the next step? Do I need to get more people to say, yeah, Steve, let's do that? Or do we go a different route, or do I just say it and hope that somebody does something? So. Well, that's, I'm thinking that that was all the way back to CAREZAC money, quite frankly, so I'm not 100% sure where it's coming from, but I know if you look at your water bill, it says on there, you can pull the picture up if we needed it, but it's out. It's sitting there. I was going to say, my guess is ARPA now, but, yeah, go for it, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just going to make it official, I guess, and make a motion to authorize the city manager to extend the year to 2022 and 23, for that matter.
Because we still have money left.
Yeah, just 22.
I was thinking because 22 is in the books now.
Second.
It makes sense to do 22.
Yeah, I was actually making notes about the proclamation and talking to Lan, can you state once more what the issue is? If you want to correct?
Yeah, so on our water bills, the utility fund, if our utilities, behind, it says if you're behind, call us and work with VOA or whoever it is to get that covered, but it ends by saying 20 to 21. I have to look at my photo again, and I was suggesting that that probably is an ongoing problem, because I know we identified those folks, we reached out to them, and the ones who were willing to, you know, step up did, I don't know what the other ones did, but I suspect that list has potentially grown, so I just wanted to make sure that we had room in there. So I don't know how to word that other than whatever it says on the water bill right now, extend that to 22, and maybe that will get more people.
Some more people to apply for assistance.
Yes.
Yeah, because I understand we have some money left over there.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Yes.
Yeah. And then my second one, and I mean this as since.
Do we need to vote on that first?
Oh, we already, oh, perfect, sorry.
So, okay, then all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so we have just extended it to 2022.
Awesome.
Through 2022.
Yeah, perfect, so I don't know if that's, Ricky was here, that might be, send that out. Nonetheless, now can we move to two? Second one?
Mm-hmm.
Second one hopefully is even quicker. So I just want to stand firm that I have no idea how much money we've actually spent, where we said we were, I'm with you, Mayor Protem, that I thought we said yes, so I want to look at my documents, because it was a piece of paper as well as verbal and discussions. But nonetheless, you know, before we lose all this money, I just want to put it out there that that water tower symbol is long overdue for somebody to do something different with it. It was going to be the very last thing I ever said about ARPA, but now it seems that we're going to piecemeal this thing, I'm like, hey, put it out there now. Can we agree that we need to do something with our water tower? Perhaps Chair Page's comment about a welcoming symbol, that might be a place to put it up there. I mean, in the spirit of like, let's do something with it, because it's pretty embarrassing to continue to drive by a very faded water tower that we actually draw attention to throughout the year. No idea how much that would cost, but it'd be great to know that we think it should be changed. What's that?
It's on our to-do list to fix the water tower.
To probably even replace it.
No, I haven't seen that to-do list.
We already authorized it.
We did. Was I on the council when that happened?
I don't know.
Yeah, I was going to say, how long ago was that? Yeah, I was going to say lead, for sure. Don't get rid of the logo, the person who designed the logo is being honored by you all on Monday. It's a former finance director of the city, who, he did the logo. According to, I had a lengthy conversation with your former city manager, who was a city manager for 25 years, from 1967 to 1992. Well, but we have to honor somebody else, because the city manager said that the, that he had asked the finance director to come up with the logo, and he insists that the finance director, who had, who was finance director for 18 years, from 1980 to 1998, and he's, at my invitation, he's coming in Monday to just be recognized with his family, he's very ill, and so it's kind of a special thing. So I'm just encouraging us not to talk about doing away with the water tower on Monday evening when he's. No, I'm not talking about doing away with the water tower.
And maybe it was to a collaboration, and it was a long time ago, but whoever put it together and everything, it's a very nice logo.
Yeah, and for the record, I would just like to be able to see it. So I don't, I don't say changing it per se, but at the same time, if we want to add some new stuff to it, so be it, but just saying that I would love to have that as one of our, hey, look, everybody, see that? That's something your dollars paid for. What's that? Okay, yeah, so anyway, so again, in the spirit of, I don't know if that goes anywhere, I just want to put that out there that I have been waiting to put that little project in front of us again, especially if we already have done the hard part, which is get rid of that lead paint. Hopefully it'd be cheaper, but I don't know.
Okay, does anyone have anything that you want to?
Were you going to talk about the financial course?
You can, you can mention it.
Go ahead.
Okay. So did everyone fill in their F1s for the PDC for this year? Yeah, yeah. You did? I just, I just did it, and I, and I got a reminder from the PDC, and I thought, did I miss the first one? Because I got a reminder, and usually I say, I do it on the first one, so I thought, okay, so now we're thinking, did everybody else miss, miss it too? And so in case you did, and you all know about it, so that's good, because we don't want to get fined, so. But it is in April, but I went ahead and did a lot of stuff this week that I put off. I understand that the property behind the 7-Eleven is going to get cleared, so the townhomes that we approved years ago, yeah, no, 52nd. Yeah. Yeah, that's, but I heard that they're going to start on that, so, and I passed by it and I see a sign from the city, so hopefully that's, something's going to happen. The, Mark O'Connor posted, I think you saw it too, he was right there in front of Diamond Knot. Yeah, he did come, and he did a video of him in front of Diamond Knot saying, I used to play over there when he was 12 years old with his, with his band every Thursday night, and the only reason why, well, we're here for this meeting, he's playing tonight at the Triple Door with his new book that's going to probably talk about Mount Lake Terrace a lot. Yes, I know. But anyways, I wanted to see him in December, and he came, his performance at Kirkland Performance Hall was during that ice storm. So maybe next time, but this time he's really talking about his book, and I wanted someone from Mount Lake Terrace to raise their hand at the Triple Door and ask him a question about his early days in this city. But anyways, and then the, I just wanted to just mention that I'm going to be on a panel speaking at the council, county council chambers in Snoke County, and it's about opening doors to home ownership panel. So, and it's Tuesday, March 21st, from 11 to 12. And then the other night, everyone was talking about a sewer odor. Did everyone, what was that? Because I haven't heard anything more about it, and it was gone by the morning.
I thought it was the vinegar I put on the concrete to kill the moss.
Well, I do that, too.
Yeah, but I think it came from Edmonds.
And that is it. That's all I have. Anyone else? If not, we're adjourned.